Well. First up is a report from our chamber.
Chantel.
Purple.
Yeah.
What's the word?
Can you hear?
They're on the.
Yeah. I mean, I'm not sure.
What are you doing?
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Does everybody have a napkin before we begin?
Oh.
For crying?
No.
Yeah.
I'm gonna share a screen. We're gonna share some pretty pictures while you guys eat. Is that fettuccine? It looks good.
Very good. Some kind of eating.
So. Yeah, see what you're missing out.
Capellini.
If you came in person, Troy, you could eat with us.
Kevin gives his regrets. He couldn't be. He's going to a Kraken game tonight.
Ooh, that's awesome.
Who's on? Who they playing tonight?
Okay.
Hopefully, they break that streak.
Six will love it. All right.
Blue is twenty twenty-two, um, uh, orange is twenty twenty-three, and this has been, uh, on the far left, the Thursday of, uh, that is Thanksgiving Day, followed by Black Friday and the Saturday, Sunday that followed. Um, and then the, uh, following two weekends, um, this last weekend, uh, being almost on completely on par with the, uh, Friday, Black Friday as far as visitation. And you can see where we are headed as far as what the rest of the month, um, has in store. So we are headed towards, um, our number one contender, holder of the title of busiest day of the year, which is the third Saturday of December. Um, so that kind of gives you an indication and these, these weeks kind of flip-flop. You can see that, um, through between Christmas and New Year's, uh, we, the, that pedestrian traffic is pretty high, um, consistently throughout the week. So, that is what we've got coming. Um, this Saturday, it's funny comparing the two, the Friday, um, uh, Black Friday and this past Saturday, two days where pedestrian traffic was almost exactly the same, um, within a couple hundred. Uh, but you had a beautiful sunny day and no traffic management and then a, um, traffic, uh, traffic management on a day where we received ten inches of snow starting at about two o'clock, one o'clock in the afternoon. So, um, the same amount of traffic downtown, but vastly different days and driving conditions, um, going on. Um, and moving on from that, um, this is what it did look like around, uh, two o'clock on this past Saturday. Um, just as it started to snow. And this is what it looked like at about three thirty from the webcam. Uh, the crowd, this is one of the highest peaks of the day as far as.
Well, that's running out.
Yeah.
Just down there.
It was, um, it's one of those things operationally, you know, it's a nightmare, but, uh, when you walk around and everybody had like ear to ear grin, they're living the, um, snow globe fantasy in, uh, in Leavenworth. They were very happy. Um, in the fest hall, if you guys haven't been in there, we have, um, it all set up, uh, started on Black Friday. It goes till, um, December twenty-fourth, um, but the booths are set up. We have the gingerbread house competition, uh, on display. One of the booths is for kids crafts where they can go and get a free cap to work on, um, or a coloring, uh, sheet to color, or they can write a letter to Santa. And then we, um, have our Christmas town ambassador staffing both of those and the bottom left corner one, which is the gift wrap booth. So anybody buying a gift in downtown Leavenworth, um, or anywhere in Leavenworth for that, for that matter, um, can bring the gift into the gift wrapping booth and get a gift wrapped for free. Um, and these were all the winners of our gingerbread competition. Um, the, the one on the right is, um, if anybody key guess Canyon Ren Recital Hall, um, so ICCA took, took first place in the nonprofit division. And then we have the adult visit division and our two, um, youth, uh, winners as well. Um, also happening in the fest hall is children's story time. We're at one and three o'clock. We have our ambassadors read, uh, stories to kids. Um, and here's me doing a live broadcast on the weather channel, which was picked up earlier in the week. Um, reminding people to check the passes before they come over, and I'm sure that I'm sure they all did that. Um, and then we also, since we last talked, I think we had the, uh, concert, the free concert, um, the first weekend, um, for Saturday. Or I'm sorry, the Saturday of Thanksgiving weekend, um, and that was well attended. We had about over five hundred people coming to the fest hall for that. And now we have our carolers out. We have our costume characters roaming. We've got some new, uh, characters this, this year, our Rudolph was pretty tired and we had to retire that costume, got a new one. Uh, we got an elf and our new Bumble from Rudolph the red-nosed reindeer. Um. And then as far as promotions, we have the free gift wrap promotion that's going on in town. And then, um, we have the midweek shopping, um, promotion that's shopping midweek and people get a free Christmas town shopping bag. And we also have the advent calendar going on. This is something we started during the pandemic as a way people could interact with Leavenworth, um, when they couldn't come, uh, but it's been so popular, uh, we've kept it going and people, um, enter daily and they can win a prize, um, and it's fall from, um, our local merchants and vendors. Um, so it also kind of acts as a way to promote their business and their products. And we have about five thousand people a day enter and, um, to, to win this. So it's, um, it's really good too for, uh, padding our, uh, newsletter and distribution list. And this is my puppy Sanderson. I just thought I would throw my puppy picture in there because who doesn't love a puppy, right? That brings me to the end. Yes. Um. Any questions anybody has about stuff?
Troy, this is Jason. I, uh, I was down this weekend and just blew me away. I think I went down about ten AM and then about noon and there was such a dramatic increase in the crowds just in a couple hour window, but I have a question. Um, I thought, I'll first say, I thought of you and I thought of a famous skit from Saturday Night Live with Will Ferrell. You know the cowbell skit?
More cowbell.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah. We just little.
I thought of you when, when I walked through town and heard the music. Because you have a bunch of speakers out that I had never experienced before, so it's like you're at a holiday concert. It's quite loud. Um.
Yeah.
Just, that's thousand observation and I was wondering if that was an experiment or?
Uh, no, we do that every year.
That's every year?
Yep. Yeah, we do that every year. The, um, Kennison Sound that also does our Oktoberfest, they, um, they do that for us. Uh, because of all the live performances, it is impossible once the crowds get really into full murmur and swing to hear the performances at the, at the gazebo. So that's what's being piped in is the music that happens at the gazebo.
Yeah. I was just a new experience.
Okay, okay, that explains it.
The other question.
Oh, yeah, Troy, um, are we keeping like a running average of percent increase in footfalls from your, your, uh, you know, year to year comparisons? In other words, like, um, just that an average, like a trend line, I guess, is what I'm thinking. In other words, to be able to extrapolate.
Yes, yes, that actually the reports run that. So. Yeah, it gives me a year over year, week over year, week over week, month over month, um, increase average.
Okay, and that all correlates with, um, like hotels and all that stuff? All the numbers of the increases kind of correlate together? Cause I just want to make sure footfalls has been a robust metric. That was my concern.
Yes, I'm sure I shared, I think, one of the last study sessions, how like comparing when you look at lodging tax, parking revenue, all of this, they all follow the sort of the same camel hump, um, and that is, is the trend of summer dipping down into September, kicking back up for the weekends in October. All of that. It's all.
I think I remember that. I just. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that there was averages of like saying, oh, we're looking at a ten percent increase this year, whatever percent that you've run into. So, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
All right. Well, thank, thank you, sir.
Thanks, Troy. Thanks, Troy.
Thanks for the best work, Troy.
You're welcome. Happy holidays, everybody.
Wow, thanks.
Down there.
Yeah. That's really cool. This is up. All right. Next, we've got a little time for our draft two thousand twenty-four docket. Lilah.
Thank you. Oh, thank you, Mayor, council members. Just a quick opportunity. I wanted to provide you the updated, and, and it has been our habit to give it to you this time every year. Um, but this is updated document. You'll notice that some items have been changed. Exploring cottage housing is moved up to number one. That is what this planning commission is currently working on. And they would like to finish that up before moving on to another task. So when you do your evaluation next month, I'm going to ask that this item stay as number one. And then we, number two, we have code cleanup. We have quite a few things that need to be, uh, modified. So I'm gonna also ask that that stay as number two. And then we'll do some rating. I'm hoping we can have the code cleanup done. No later than March with the planning commission, ideally back to the city council, um, by March. But any case, give myself a little leeway there. Um, so those are the big changes in the document that you saw before. So are there any questions?
Uh, Lilah, what exactly does code cleanup mean? Could you give an example?
Yeah. Uh, there's things that come up that we realize just don't make sense or didn't get removed when they should have been removed. Um, what's a good example? Um, the DRB has a section in there that says something applies to in the multifamily zoning district. But we don't want design Bavarian design review in the multifamily zone. So that's one item that Maggie had put on the list to get corrected. Um, you know, Christian has pointed out a few things. With our code updates this last year, it looks like we might have missed a section or two, uh, getting deleted. So we have some duplication text. Um, things, things like that are in there. Oh, and then the big one, of course, was Shalan County, making sure that the county understands what rules apply to them or not. So I'd like to make any clarifications to our code early in the year, and the county has told us that they will be asking all cities to provide updated regulations to them sometime in February or March. And then they'll do a, a new adoption of all the city, for all the cities. Um, so in the case, that'll be an interesting process.
Thanks. Um, so it was ruled that, if I remember correctly, it was ruled that the county needed to follow what we came up with. So is that a part of what you just said, or is that a done deal and they need to get it together?
Uh, that's a kind of a done deal right now. They didn't appeal it. So they have until April to adopt the R eight zoning. Uh, and then, like I said, we'll give them all the codes that we want them to be working from. And they'll adopt those as a clean slate because record keeping, not only in Leavenworth in the county, but all the cities in the county has, uh, you know, gotten a little sideways over the decades that we've been doing this. So I think Dana wants to start with a clean slate. So, and they will adopt everything we send them because that's the MOU. And now that that's been clarified.
Okay, and that's just Shalan County. Douglas County isn't involved in anything we do.
That's correct. That's correct. We, we share a regional transportation district, but that's not related to this.
Yeah, cause I'm so used to the health district and, you know, things that go on there. I just wanted to make sure that that was a clean break. Thanks.
Yeah, great questions.
Well, I had a question on D, the House Bill thirteen thirty, thirteen thirty-seven?
Yes.
So when it talks about, um, well, first I have a, uh, I kind of, I kind of have an issue. It, it's requiring if, if somebody wanted to, they could, they could put in two ADUs on a R six lot. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah. What is their, what is your explanation for a town that has a fire issue like we do and we're packing buildings in like that?
I mean wildfire.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
I mean, they haven't addressed that. So you're saying, so you can do, it's, it's not required, but it's, you have to allow them to do that.
Yes. Uh-huh. Well, buildings are required to have fire separation. And we have adopted our wooly code, urban interface fire, uh, regulations, and those do make the exterior of the building and between buildings more re- resilient, um, less likely to catch fire building, building. So, uh, for us, I think we're in pretty good shape in some ways, maybe even a little bit better off than if we didn't. It's hard to say what's, what would be better, having the tall timber or having the structures there. Um.
Well, why I bring it up is that when I talked to the fire chief, he had some issues with you, will we quarter, will we code or not, you put additional buildings close to each other, they'll burn eventually. I mean, they're just gonna burn. So.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah.
Yeah.
So anyway, I just, I just, I have kind of resistance to that. I know it, I just bothers me there. Insisting on requiring that when it might not have the consciousness of what this town is gonna deal with. So I just wanted to make mention of that. And the other thing I wanted to ask you was down there where it says, it has the criteria, it says height, uh, number four, heights shall be consistent with primary residence. So consistent, how, how, how consistent? Like same height, like exactly the house is twenty-five? The ADU is twenty-five? Is that what, is that what they're saying? Or do we know what they're saying?
Yes, that's what the state is saying. And currently, we don't distinguish between those uses. So that, that works currently. I know with the cottage housing, which is not accessory dwelling housing, uh, with the cottage housing that the planning commission is talking about, they're talking about reducing the height limit for those types of structures. Um, but for the ADUs, especially as governed and outlined by the state, and as you're referencing, they, they will be requiring that you allow them to be at the same height as a regular, single-family home.
Which is actually thirty-five?
Yeah, yes.
Mid-peak, um.
No higher, no, it's thirty.
Uh, rich, thirty-five, thirty-five rich. Okay, total height, right. Okay. Okay, so that's, it isn't, they're not talking about the house that's on the lot. They're talking about what you can build a new house to.
Yes.
Height shall be consistent with the primary residence.
Yes.
Okay.
So if you build a garage and put an ADU on top.
I'm concerned about that one too.
Yeah.
See, um, I saw, uh, I was watching the news the other night and a house caught fire, not here, but a house caught fire. And the house next door, you know, it had that ten-foot thing. House next to it had several windows, so they probably were there first. But which is neither here nor there, but they had several windows and the fire was so horrendous in the house next to it. It blew out all the windows in the house next to it, plus caught that house on, on fire, which they, they almost stopped, going and burned down. But I'm even wondering if ten feet is kind of scary.
Yeah, that ten feet is the rule of radiant heat or will, and some windows, you can buy windows that are not, that are heat resistant. They're way more expensive. But when the chief was here earlier, that's what leads to the conflagration he talked about. So one house will catch, maybe three houses will catch remembers, and then they'll start catching homes next to them due to radiant heat exposure. It's, we see it all the time.
Uh-huh. So we.
Cities.
Yeah, so we had that fire on Birch, I believe it was, this summer. And, uh, Christian was noting when she went back to do an inspection that the house built next door with the wooey compliance had no damage. Uh, and they were the same distance apart to the house on the other side, which wasn't really constructed and did have damage. So the wooly regulations are helping fire to fire, house to house. Uh, and so we have empirical data on that.
Yeah, I would just, I would just say that if you have a multiple, that's one fire. If you have multiple fires through town, that's kind of a different story.
Yeah, that's, that's a hugely different story because we just don't have enough fire engines and personnel and at that point, you know, they'll, they'll be giving us guidance on other things to do, potentially evacuations and that kind of thing.
But also during extreme fire behavior, you generally get hot wind from the fire itself, from the massive wildfires in the area, and the hot wind changes a lot of things in terms of.
Having had a house burned down December twelfth, actually, in, uh, nineteen ninety-six, our, our fruit, our house that was on that lot burned down. And wind was blowing towards the way. So the fire was kind of shifting over towards the way, but that was Central Avenue there. So it wasn't towards our garage, which was more than ten away, but, um, it's quite an experience.
You lost your, not rap, brief, was that the rap?
No, no, no.
No.
No, it was electrical, something electrical. The house, it was an old, the house was eighty years old. And, um, quite an experience.
Terrified.
Terrified. Yeah, cause I thought my husband was in the house because of the shift that, that he was on. And when he came home, he thought I was in the house. So he ran up the driveway and the police, the fire department was trying to stop and he just went boom, and everybody went to the snow, but they got him before he got in the house because he thought I was in there. At that point, I was in the garage. I couldn't watch anymore.
Yeah. Geez. Well, Lilith, one more question. Um, do, do you envision seeing zoning change, um, with respect to increasing density downtown? Like the natural evolution of cities as you see them from older times is that zoning allows density to increase from the center of town outward, right? It's just a natural, cities naturally evolve. Is that something you guys are considering? Changing zoning over time to, you know, maybe multifamily goes out a little further, commercial goes out a little further, accommodate like bigger, um, you know, multi, multi-unit structures as you move from out downtown, as you know, housing gets replaced, that kind of.
Well, that's just part of the comprehensive plan visioning process. So when we were looking at our UGA expansion, part of that next step is to potentially identify additional industrial land. And then in twenty twenty-six, when we do our larger community visioning, we'll start in twenty twenty-five. Uh, we hope to have those type of discussions with people as well. I know the community has talked about expanding the multifamily in the past, and it's gotten very mixed results because you're expanding multifamily into existing, single-family. But there may be other places to expand to, new regions, especially if our UGA expansion occurs. So there's, there's always opportunities for those discussions, primarily with our mandatory update, which will be adopted in twenty twenty-six and primarily reviewed in twenty twenty-five.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I just want to make sure that's on the radar. The only other thing I was thinking about when I look at this, you know, the planning is where are we at with, um, planning on in terms of the heritage tree program in terms of like, do we have a safeguard to prevent all of our older, you know, old growth trees being removed from the city? And kind of ending up with a more concrete and less tree city. I would love to see our older trees remain and be, and, 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 and keep our skyline full of trees. I know there's fire hazards that can be trimmed properly. The larger old pines that we have, like the duck firs and the ponderosas are generally fire adapted as long as there's not a lot of ladder fuels. But I just hate to see big old trees being removed from our city if they're not sick. So I didn't know if that was part of the planning commission's, um, purview.
Uh, no, we haven't done a residential tree inventory. Um, I believe a few years back, they did a tree inventory of public works and public trees, um, and we could look at redoing those. Most tree cities like Antioch is a tree city. They have an active planning program where they, you know, look at the trees and where they can plant them and how many trees they plant each year. It's more community driven than, um, a, a planning process. So that would be a great project for a group of interested residents to, to spearhead more than, uh, the city to regulate, um, would be my recommendation, but it's currently not on the docket.
I understand. Yeah, I just think it's important to be able to safeguard our skyline in terms of trees. And suddenly we have all these tall buildings or whatever that it turns into a more urban than rural, and I'd like to keep that real. So I would, I would advocate for the city being a big part of keeping trees in our skyline. But.
Well, thank.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, how is item number C regarding the UGA? How is that related to, uh, item number nine on our consent agenda tonight?
Oh, um, let me double check. I'm getting there.
Sorry, item number nine on our consent agenda tonight is associated with a contract for AHBL.
Yeah, I assumed it was. I was just triple checking. I don't want to start a conversation, go, uh, why? Um, yes, so the consulting firm has been budgeted for that project. It's just a matter of extending the contract into next year so that we can continue the work. Um, we aren't currently asking for any additional money for that project, just the extension of the timeline. At least that's my understanding of it.
Um.
That helpful?
Well, I thought it was.
There is money listed. Yeah.
Yeah, there's a supplemental addition to it because it's supplemental agreement number two for thirty-five thousand seven hundred dollars to be, to be extended through the end of twenty twenty-four. So if this is on our docket, that doesn't mean we're necessarily moving forward with it as a priority because we haven't made our priorities known yet, um, working with the planning commission. So my, my question was, how are they related? And I guess why do we have that on our consent agenda tonight?
Well, we do want to be prepared, but you're right. If the city council is particularly the new members, um, you know, as a group, if you decide that that's something you don't want to pursue, we can, we just won't pursue it. But, um, I would recommend keeping it on the consent agenda because it's, uh, timely to get it updated. Um, I believe their contract ended in December. And, uh, it'll provide us the opportunity to move forward should the new council, uh, approve the work. The applicant, the company is doing kind of a summary. I was hoping to have it. Uh, well, I told them before the January meeting, so you guys would have it ahead of your, um, prioritizing meeting, but I was hoping to have it this month, a little memo about what we've done and where we're at in the process.
Are there portions of this re-engagement of the UGA boundary that are particularly pertinent to the city specifically that needs it to be higher on the priority list?
You know, that's a really hard to say and a great question, Ann, because you know, originally we talked about the need for more industrial land and, you know, diversifying our income and revenue and, and workforce opportunities. And so to the extent that you prioritize that, yeah, there are things that are pertinent to the city that need to move forward more quickly. We had also been talking about the housing and providing more opportunity for housing. So this UGA study was a big part of the housing committee's, uh, recommendation, particularly when Mia Brez was on the council. But, uh, you know, it continued forward after she left as well. So those are the two hot topic items for the UGA to ensure. Yeah. Is that helpful?
Yeah, that is helpful. Uh, for the consent agenda, if, if we weren't to move forward tonight with the supplemental agreement and the contract ended at the end of this year, that wouldn't keep us from being able to go, get under contract with them again once we've prioritized the docket. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. We could, um, bring it back to a later city council meeting. Um, uh, I don't have it in front of me. I do know they are doing some work right now. Chantel is, doesn't, maybe doesn't have her packet in front of her if, to know exactly how much they spent or where they were at.
So. In December.
It ends well.
And this is this.
This month, this month, yeah.
Chantel.
I'm here. Um, sorry if there's a lot of beeping and weird noises going on in the hospital room. Which contract were you referring to?
The A H B L for the urban growth area. You were, I don't think they were maxed out yet.
No, I actually had a question for you regarding that one because the cost. It it appears that the cost is doubling with this additional uh contract because that was the same amount of the first one. Is that the case, Lilith?
I know. No.
I think extending it beyond because we had to put it on hold. So this is still a time extension and not just a funds extension.
Yeah.
Contract live, so you don't have to go back out to bid and go through that hassle.
I think that works.
It's just extending the the day.
That's not what the task says right now, but we can do that.
You can pull that out.
Is it several? There's several like that.
Right.
Or as modified.
Bunch of stuff tonight. I was.
Just to clarify on on some of the others, it's a full renewal for the twenty twenty four year. Uh, the A H B L one was a doubling up and that that one was the only one I noticed that was actually a doubling up.
Mm hmm.
I'm sorry.
So the C W A one is um. Just a company we've been using for a while and then Blades uh Code Services is our building official. What's the other one I had on on there? Um. Any case. So yeah, maybe the recommendation is to just extend the timeline, but not the dollar figure. And I'd be okay with that. I I don't recall the discussion on how that figure got in there, but. That's okay.
Just out of curiosity, did Sue put that contract together for you, Will?
Yes, all of those I, yeah. Any case, were there any other questions on the docket?
Well, for the for the prior docket items, items H I N J. Was any work done on those at all this last year or those untouched and just being brought forward?
Well, I we did do some work on um. And J, no, H and J have not been. Addressed at all. J really needs to be done. It is so outdated. Um, and then the H triflexes and townhomes. The state law may mandate us to look at those. Um, but it wouldn't have to be done this coming year.
Correct.
Mm hmm. And then manufactured homes is is a. Um, we're going to catch some of that another another time, I'm sure. So. Manufactured home parks, we just don't have room for any right now.
Yeah.
And our residential design standards. Kind of limit the ability to have a manufactured home placed. And that. That needs to be kind of looked at carefully.
But manufactured homes are allowed in um in the multifamily district?
They're allowed everywhere under state law.
Okay.
Mm hmm. A a new manufactured home.
Oh, right. Okay. So there's no, there's no um ordinance against them. They're just, we're looking at how to integrate them better, though?
Well. With the state law changed, it said you had to allow manufactured homes. At the same time, the city of Leavenworth said, yes, we'll allow manufactured homes, but they also created design standards. That manufactured homes don't meet. So, you know, it was a. Double whammy. You can do it, but you can't meet the standard. So.
But I mean, you can, you can specify a manufactured home to meet a state standard, like the ones that were put in in Whitman. They were like. Box pre manufactured units. You put three of them together and they they're squares and they meet the snow load, of course. So.
Well, I'm not, I'm not really talking about snow load. I'm just talking about things like rough overhang requirements and.
Oh.
Glazing and, yeah, siding requirements and. Things like that, but uh. Any case, yeah, the Whitman project was different. That was in the manufactured zone. Those are not single family homes. They don't have to meet the same standard as, say, a mobile home that was would be placed in a residential district.
I understand. There's a distinction between those pre main prefabricated and and mobile type.
Yeah, well, there's a, yeah, there's a couple of distinctions there, but any case. I may try to tackle some of those. Limitations for manufactured homes with the mand with the code. Cleanup.
Mm hmm.
And move the standards that are in title fourteen to eighteen zoning, which would be a more appropriate place to keep them.
Lilith, under O, what are exempt alley parking lots?
Um, I think that was actually related to the landscaping requirements. So landscaping for parking is required, but not when it's off of an alley, access off an alley.
Okay.
Mm hmm.
Thanks.
We have that. Yeah, based on our path. Go ahead.
Oh, I was just asking if they had any other questions. I just wanted to clarify, I guess, other than A and B, the. Explore the cottage housing, the code cleanup. Everything else is not listed according to priorities. Those all could be made. Number three, right?
Yep, yep.
Okay, okay.
That that's our goal.
All right. I also have one final question. It's more of a broad thing, which is, I guess I'm famous for that. But um. If we're looking at a sustainable tourism plan. We should certainly be looking at a sustainable wildfire prevention plan. And I know we have our WUWE codes and all that stuff, but I think. In a broader sense. If we're looking at how to manage tourism, I think equally important and and I would say um imminent. Is our wildfire threat. So I think it's just the same importance. And I would love to see that the, I don't know if that falls under. Urban planning, but it seems to be because we live in a wildfire zone, so I would plan my city around wildfires for sure. So I would just love to see that as an actual item. That we are looking at ways to, you know, improve upon our WUWE codes, improve upon our. Uh, retrofit grant, improve upon our our ways to resist wildfire as, you know, Medical Lake wasn't able to. To say, I would be great if we could all tour Medical Lake and watch the rebuilding process and understand what they would do differently. Didn't we have someone from Pateros come speak to us?
Yeah, we did.
Here. And and what did she say?
Said sort of coab.
Okay. Anyway, that's just my final. I have no more questions. Thank you. I just see that as a big broad necessity.
I don't know if that falls.
Thank you.
Docket or not, but I do, of course. Yeah, of course, I think we need to do more.
Wherever it falls, we should do it. Basically, it falls on us, council.
It does.
Does. Lilith, when is our joint meeting in January with the planning commission?
It's the second meeting of the month.
Okay, and that's our meeting this time, right?
Yes, it is. Running commissioner will be joining you.
Okay.
Well, the rest of this time is party time.
Woo.
Yay. Hey, we've got to say goodbye to. Three of our members and want to send them off with. Uh, yeah. Appreciation for their time and commitment and all of their energy and good. Good uh ideas and discussions and all of those things, actions and. Got some cake appreciation to. To each of them and hopefully um. They won't be strangers.
So before we start, I gotta get something off my chest.
Get it off your chest. There's a major injustice here and I'm going to renify it today.
There's a major what?
Justice. Look at that. Salt pepper. Is that your contribution?
It's my party shot. I'm waving it here.
I should have had hot sauce.
I can bring that next time. I'll get rock and roll about eat and go.
Hmm.
You thought you were gonna go full Festivus.
Never even thought of that.
Yeah. Nicely done. You 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 want that on your cake? Is that? Finishing.
Yeah. I think hot sauce for the cake would be great. So it's a major justice.
It's it's major injustice and I'd change it.
Nice, well done.
Yeah.
So if anything, you contributed salt.
I did. Flavor. You guys, every time you salt your food now, you can think.
Think of people.
Yeah.
Thank you. Who will be sitting in the audience seeing what we're doing?
I'll probably get the call and say, hey, we ran out.
We need refill.
Yeah.
Who's cutting the cake? Kara.
No, but I can take some photos.
Come on, Carrie.
Thank you. I mean, thanks. We have a laptop moving on the water bottles down and all the jackets.
Do you want to?
That's not high maintenance.
Do you want us to please stay sitting back here or should we?
Yeah, I'll call the meeting of Leavenworth City Council for December twelfth to order, please. So you can press the display. Jason, what?
pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, roll call.
Sharon Waters.
Clint Strand.
Jason Lundgren.
Anne Hesberg.
Sneak Reister.
Marco Aurelio.
People like.
Great. All present accounted for. And um I would. Ask for a motion to approve, but I want to make a couple of notes on the consent agenda. One is number nine. Is we are going to scratch the added amount and only extend the date December thirty first of twenty twenty four. There's still some to be used and they're still working. So. We're for now, if we need more, we'll come back later. So that one is just to extend the date to December thirty first. And just to comment on twelve, those mayor appointments to the housing and parking advisory committees. For the citizen resident um. Appointments and we'll be doing consent council ones after the first three years. So. That just to clarify that. I would, uh, on those notes, I would ask.
I have a request, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I have some questions on number seven, eight and ten in the consent agenda. Um. I don't know if you want to field questions now or just pull them and discuss them later.
If if there's something we can just address quick and.
Um, some of them are more substantial questions. It might be good for us to just cover them really quickly elsewhere.
Okay, you want to pull them or do it?
Uh, yeah, let's let's pull them and we can move on to.
Okay.
So on in our agenda because we have a lot of guests tonight.
Right. So we'll, you said seven.
Seven, eight and ten, please.
Eight and ten will bring down and. Make those first action items. Okay, with those pulled out, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. I'll make a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda as amended.
Second.
Moved by Jason and seconded by Sharon. All those in favor, let me see your hands. Passed unanimously. All right, our next item is any comments from people in the public on items not on the agenda. If you're here for something on the agenda, you'll get your chance to speak at that time, but. Anybody have anything they want to say or question or comment? Seen none on the screen. I see nobody jumping up, so we'll move on from there. Our next is a presentation from Manuel Navarro um and from Plum Valley Community Health. Come on up.
Yeah, that's part of the center. Run center here. I won't be able to see my notes, but that's okay. I'll look back to.
Okay, you can you can turn to the side if you want.
Great. So good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, spell councilmen, women. My name's Manuel Navarro. I'm the CEO at Plum Valley Community Health. Want to thank you for the opportunity just to come and share a little bit about our organization, uh, update you on some of the activities we are doing in um. In Shalana Douglas Counties and then also just uh at the end, uh, be available for any questions you might have about. Anything that I shared today or or anything about our organization as well. So. As I mentioned, my name's Manuel Navarro. I've been with the organization now for about twelve years in various administrative roles. Um. I was privileged and honored to be uh step into the CEO role a little over a year ago, last July, um. And have been uh working with our board um and the community ever since here. Wanted to start off with just a little bit about um.
Sorry, I, okay, go ahead.
All right, great. Just a little bit about history and I I think whenever I go and talk to municipalities or other organizations. A lot of people um still ask me, what is a community health center or federally qualified qualified health center? So I thought I'd start off with a little background. One of the things that um. That we're always proud to say is that community health center really started out with uh pretty two movements in the sixties from the agricultural migrant center movements in the West. Uh, working at agricultural worker help and then a couple of urban projects in the east and Boston, Mississippi. Looking at uh urban rural health and really uh looking at trying to provide services for underserved populations. And so in in the mid sixties, uh, Lyndon B Johnson officially recognized creating the uh Bureau of Primary Care Section three thirty. Federally qualified health centers with the mission of providing affordable, high quality, comprehensive primary care to medically underserved populations. Regardless of their insurance status or ability to pay. Today, there are a little over thirteen hundred community health centers, federally qualified health centers. Throughout the United States and every state. In uh Washington alone, we have a twenty seven recognized community health centers. C B C H being one of them servicing the residents of Shalane and Douglas County. Little bit about the individuals that we serve. One in eleven people in the United States currently access healthcare through a community health center in their area. And you can see some of the specialty populations. One in eight children serve uh receive care through a community health center. One in seven racial ethnic minority, one in five Medicaid beneficiaries, one in five uninsured person. And then one in three people living in poverty receive their care through a community health center. C B C H um. We're proud to have uh celebrated our fiftieth uh anniversary last year. We've been serving residents of uh. Starting off with residents of Shalane, Douglas, Grant, Okaunagun County when we were officially uh started and um. Over the years, Okaunagun County with Family Health Center uh has have started at Q H C there and then Moses uh Lake has uh Moses Lake Community Health Center. Serving the residents of Grant County. So we continue to focus our efforts on the residents of Shalane and Douglas County, really looking to identify gaps. In access to these vital healthcare services, medical, dental, behavioral health and um other services throughout. I think one of the questions I I did a lot is who owns C B C H? Um, as a federally qualified health center, one of the requirements is that you are actually a public entity. Uh, governed by a board of um board of directors. And one of the requirements for a community health center board is that at minimum fifty one percent. Uh, the board members have to be users of the service for that health center. So in that sense, our uh our patients uh really look at and run our organization and guide me as their only employee, the CEO. On what are the services that our community members need and how do we go about meeting those needs throughout? This last year, as I mentioned, been working with the board in my first role and I really wanted to take a look at um. Why we were here and look at our vision at C B C H. And so working with the board and executive team. Wanted to share a little bit about what our vision is and that really is to. Uh, provide the best access to whole person care for underserved individuals in North Central Washington. And I have uh three words there that I want to delve into a little bit more and just really flesh out what those words really mean uh when we say them. Access, you know, access really is three components. We want to make sure that we provide affordable access. Which I think we're able to do with our ability to provide sliding fee scale and make healthcare affordable based on ability to pay. We know that we also want to look at providing timely access, which is a challenge across all of healthcare because. We know that we also wanna look at providing timely access, which is a challenge across all of healthcare because of the lack of of um providers, lack of resources that are out there and just as many, many of you may or may not have experienced just uh ability to get in to see primary care and long wait times in the ER and urgent care. But really looking at how do we continue to improve that timely access by increasing the number of uh service providers that we have. And then, of course, convenient access. I think um oftentimes what's convenient to us as an organization may not necessarily be convenient to patients. They would really look at how, how can we continue to improve access to overall care? Whether it's um after hour care, weekend care, uh telehealth and looking at creative ways to make sure that that care is convenient and so that they can access. When we talk about whole person care, again, it's about three components. It's really looking at a person's physical and uh mental health. And I think we do a good job at that, of course, with our access for medical and dental services on the physical health and our um access to behavioral health services for mental health. Where we continue to struggle and where we know that it's going to be a challenge and we're, we're up to the task and figuring out how to address this is how do we take care of a person's social health? The social determinants that really um have shown to have more effect on a person's clinical outcome than just their ability to access medications or even genetics. Things like where people live, whether or not they have transportation, their education level, their ethnicity and, and understanding the system that they're working in in terms of trying to access care. So one of the things that we're really trying to figure out is how do we support our patients with that social care and uh supporting them so we can truly provide that whole person care. And then finally, I always wanna stress why we're here and, and make sure that we fully understand what our objectives are in serving the underserved. You know, we have had tremendous growth at C B C H over the last uh ten years or so. And our, our objective isn't to take over healthcare or everything. It's impossible to do. We know we rely on partners um Cascade and uh you know Confluence and Lake Shalane Health, certainly in our area. But we also know that there's still a vast amount of people who don't access services because of various reasons. And so when we look at underserved, it's how do we break down the barriers? Like I mentioned, transportation, location of where they live, uh language, culture. How do we break down barriers to health coverage and in helping people access insurance that they may not know they're eligible for? And then, of course, how do we break down the lack of health services in our area by looking for creative ways to bring those providers to our uh to our area and being able to open up uh services that may not have been here before but that people really do need for uh that whole person care. The um I think one of the things that I always like to point out is, again, a misnomer that as a federally qualified health center, I get a lot of comments about, oh, you're a, you're a federal government clinic. You get a hundred percent support from your, from the government for your operating services. And the reality is that for, as a federally qualified health center, we do have access to a base grant. And we have access to ongoing grants that are available through the Bureau of Primary Care and HERSA. But the reality is, that's really all the grant money that we had in two thousand twenty-two made up nine, about nineteen percent of our total operating budget. Everything else is derived through uh the services that we deliver. Again, we're not a free clinic. We charge for everything we do. But we do work with patients to make it affordable for those that are uninsured or underinsured. And so uh about eighty percent of our revenue does come from our operate, from our services that we provide. And I like to think that, you know, certainly prior to me, that C B C H has been a pretty well-run, sustainable organization, able to uh work through those revenues and continue to reinvest in the organization and grow. Little uh graph here, um you know, although we serve underserved and uninsured, uh the majority of our patients actually do have insurance. But we're still about sixteen percent of patients who are uninsured uh for various reasons, whether they're um ineligible for ineligible for insurance or they just choose not to uh uh sign up for an insurance plan. So we still see um a fair amount of people who are uninsured. But again, the majority of our patients do have insurance commercial and predominantly Medicaid and Medicare as well. And then, of course, our expenses go to not, what else would be the labor as much of a lot of organizations, labor is our biggest expense. Healthcare in itself is a very um expensive um service to provide with the providers that we bring on board. I think we try to make sure that, you know, we'll never be the highest paying provider uh the highest paying organization, but we certainly wanna have attractive market rates for our providers and staff um so that we can attract the teams that we need to have here. Uh and then, as I mentioned, aside from just primary medical, behavioral health and dental, we do offer an array of services that um many of our patients access. Whether it's our substance use disorder clinic that we just opened up three years ago, New Path. We have pharmacies on site that offer three forty D medication access for um uh affordable medications for uninsured, underinsured. Uh lab entries on site, pediatrics, dental, WIC and other items that uh I value list there. I mentioned that our service area is um Shalane Douglas County and you can kinda see uh the regions that we draw the majority of our patients from. The darker uh is pretty much where seventy-five percent of our patients come from. And so it makes sense, those are the metropolitan areas where we have major clinics in uh Wenatchee, East Wenatchee and Shalane up north and Shalane Manson area. But you can see, we do draw people from the uh Douglas Plateau uh in Douglas County and then certainly people from uh the, the Shastin, Kashmir and Leavenworth area to the west. Last year, uh we report every year what's called U D S report uh to the federal government in terms of the services we provide, the number of patients we provide. So I thought I'd share a little bit about that um today. Last year, C B C H served about thirty, almost thirty-eight thousand unique individuals uh through the various service sites and services. Uh thirty-six percent were pediatric, fifty-three percent were adult and eleven percent were geriatric. Um which predominantly looking, working through our medical clinics is the service that we provide. Um, we do, did get thirty percent of those patients went through our dental clinics and ten percent of our behavioral health. I will say that behavioral health is the fastest growing demand service that we see and one of the areas that we're continuing to grow and look at expanding for access issues. Eighty percent of our patients uh that we served self-identified as having income levels that fell below two hundred percent of the poverty level. And I think a lot of times um the term poverty gets a negative connotation. When people talk about somebody living in poverty, it's the, oh, they're, they're choosing not to work or they're just, you know, wanting somebody else to take care of them. But the reality is, you know, two hundred percent of the poverty level, for reference, is a family of four making sixty thousand dollars a year. And so you can imagine that there are a lot of people that, that I know that are family of four making less than sixty thousand dollars a year. And they're hardworking individuals, hardworking families, certainly for uh the best for their families and healthcare is one of the most expensive items, of course, and people wanting to make sure that their families are healthy, we just work with them to make that affordable. Um, as a uh, as an originally migrant health center, uh it makes sense that our focus continues to be working with the agricultural community and agricultural workers. And so twenty-seven percent of our patients last year self-identified as being an agricultural worker. And the definition of agricultural worker isn't just somebody who's out in the fields uh harvesting or picking fruit. It also includes the people who help cultivate the people who uh are working with the irrigation, the people who drive the trucks and the, and work on the machinery um as well as the people in the packing sheds and even the agricultural uh owners and um and management are agricultural workers in our community. And so it makes sense that uh we still serve a large amount of those workers in uh our area. And then just the, just the last tidbit, last year, we served, we provided about forty-eight million dollars of care to our community that came out to be about uh twelve hundred dollars per patient in terms of the medical care that we delivered through our clinics. Now, when we, when we look at the service area that we look at, the, the federal government as with everything, has to do their own way. So they don't look at service area by zip code. They call them ZIPTAs, which is a modified zip code area. So I thought I'd share a little bit about the Leavenworth area ZIPTA. Um, per the uh federal government last census in this area that I have outlined here with uh Leavenworth being the star, so really kinda farther out west. Um, total about seventy-five hundred individuals with uh an estimate of about thirteen hundred of those individuals being low income or two hundred percent below the poverty level, so about seventeen percent of that. C B C H, last year, we served about seven hundred and fifty-six um patients who lived or identified residency in the Leavenworth ZIPTA. And six hundred and eighty-two of those were below the two hundred percent poverty level. So we are serving a predominantly low-income uh population out of the Leavenworth ZIPTA. And we'll continue to look at how do we continue to make sure that they have access to the care that uh many of them are looking for, if not uh through us, certainly through our partners like Cascade and or Confluence House. That's all I have for you today. And like I said, I just wanted to introduce myself, share a little bit about C B C H and hope that I have the opportunity to make this uh a regular occurrence and just kind of giving you more specific updates about what we're doing as an organization and try to help the, the residents of certainly the area here and Shalane Douglas County. Any questions that I can help with today?
Any questions?
No, thank you very much. I didn't know much about Plum Valley Healthcare.
Marco?
Yeah, I have one quick question. Um, I've studied a lot of uh federally subsidized healthcare around the world, including Canada, Europe. And um one of their biggest focuses on prevention because it saves them money ultimately, because they're pouring money into preventing people from using their service. And your service sounds really robust, treatment, access. I actually use some C B C H myself. So it's awesome. I really appreciate the level of care I get and the responsive, you know, all the calls and whatever. But how is C B C H invested in prevention? And just to kinda give you a roundabout idea, our top three killers in this country like obesity, diabetes and cardiovascular disease are preventable. Lifestyle and diet problems that, you know, these federally subsidized countries that do federally, federally subsidized healthcare, they work at school levels and recreation levels, like they put in these recreation districts, they deal with kids, get, making sure they're getting the right nutrition and the right activity to prevent them from coming to visit you more often. Yeah, I get that. So I'm just curious, back to that question is how is C B C H um invested in prevention or is that a larger, larger like federal problem?
No, definitely that part, we consider that part of our mission for sure. And, you know, um when I talk to individuals and um you know, and talk to them about services, I always make the comment, the best time to establish care or go and see your doctor is when you're healthy.
Right.
Because they then can help you maintain your health with some of the services that not only they provide, that we provide. You know, we look at primary care at, we use team-based care, so we actually have nutritionists and behavioral health psychologists that are embedded in our primary care clinics. So if a patient is, has come to us, you know, and we really emphasize um preventative medicine, like annual wellness exams, well child checks. You know, again, coming to see your doctor when you're healthy to make sure that they can identify early on any challenges you might be having. And then use resources like our nutritionists and our behavioral health psychologists to um you know, a lot of times it's, it's a challenge of knowledge, education and or just uh you know, willingness to, to have kind of tips on how do I get myself up at five o'clock in the morning to go practice hot yoga, you know, every morning. So that's, you know, when we look at our, our primary care, it's not just medical, but it's that team-based care approach. Diabetes education, nutrition education and um and psychological support for that, for that wellness. You, you mentioned uh, you know, schools. We do have an active school-based program where we work extensively with the schools um and uh, you know, we have uh our therapists are in the schools. That may not be as preventative, but certainly trying to help them like, you know, from exacerbation, exacerbation of any kind of mental illness they might have. We do uh dental screenings. So again, dental health, I think, is often an overlooked concept of primary care. And the fact that if you can keep somebody's dental get help, healthy, that's preventative in a lot of areas down the road. So we do screenings and making sure that we're identifying early on um individuals who may not have access to dental care um and help them find dental care there. And then um, you know, our school-based health program, aside from the immunizations and well child checks that we try to um help with the access in the schools, one of our biggest and most popular programs is the Girls on the Run program. And it's a program we have in several schools that uh is really directed to third through sixth graders and uh sixth grade girls and looking at helping them develop healthy uh habits and self-image to set them for success down the road. In fact, the, the whole program is really based around preparing them to run a five K and um so different, different modules and getting them, they run, they practice and they, the culmination of the season is our superhero five K that we hold in Wenatchee. And we have hundreds of young girls who've never run a five K or any done anything and, and really seeing not only the activity as healthy, but then have also developed good self-image uh that hopefully they can carry on to help with that preventative care. So we do try and make sure that we're not just waiting for people to get sick. They're really reaching out, helping people before they, they need our services um on a more clinical side.
That's great. Yeah, I didn't see a lot of that in your presentation, but it's great that you elaborated on that because I think that's a bigger part of you know, keeping people out of the building and keeping them healthy, heading them off at the pass before they reach those disease states.
Yeah, thank you, man. Yeah. So.
I, yeah, do you want? So a couple of years ago, my daughter was over on the other side going to dental school for the dental hygiene program. And they sprung a list of immunizations that they needed on that day or the next day or they couldn't have the phone. She called everywhere in the valley over there, called me panicking and said, I need to get these shots or I can't continue with school. So I said, call C B C H. And she did. And you guys had them, you're the only ones. But I would suggest that Cascade and even Confluence have these. Talk to the schools over there because if they don't get these immunizations, they can't continue medical school, dental schools, things like that. You get behind, it's tough to catch up.
Yeah.
You have to drop out of the program almost. But you guys had them. So kudos to you guys that you had. And they're rare. They're, they're I've never even heard of, you know, but my kid called you panicking and says, hey, what do I do? So she drove from Seattle, got to Wenatchee five minutes before you guys closed and got the shots.
She couldn't get them in Seattle.
Couldn't get them to Seattle, they didn't know. Exactly, but you know, if you guys would have had them, I mean, it would probably still be in the school. But yeah, thanks for that. But, and that's important to follow up with your sake is shots, immunizations that they need to have when you're working with somebody who's in the public. Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have a presentation from our sheriff. Sheriff Morrison.
Get your shot.
All right, so mayor, members of the council, as I said earlier on this year, I wanna make sure that I was checking you, you, the whole time of the year, you know, signing up days on, just hoping late. Been at regular meetings with you, um I give you updates. And uh all the information that I need to know regards to our patrol needs and community needs. I think that's been going pretty well. I have a lot of issues coming back from the city, which is a plus. If those issues arose, typically we want to know, trying to get a quick solution for you uh to ensure we're taking care of the quick basis of the bomb coverage. So I will open up later on, once we kind of finish up our general overview, the agency and how it's gone so far this year, just answering questions. Uh to address uh Councilman Waters, I did hear that you were looking for a request for an update. I responded to a bomb threat we had earlier on this year. We wanted, wanted to talk to you offline more directly, for the late, but I didn't feel comfortable putting our response and tactics out in the public forum, so I know this is recorded. And I certainly want you to know that we have taken steps to address that. Uh there's still active steps taking place to address it for the future. Um, so you take it seriously. Yeah, pretty adequate response. Um, some areas will be improved. Which is something we always wanna strive for, anything you can do to handle. So if we're ready to do that, wanted to give you an update on what we did or what was also we came up with.
Thank you.
So overdue. So usually earlier in the year when we talk, send that out, some main objectives uh for the sheriff's office when it came online. Number one was to get us up to uh all of our positions being filled. As of December first, uh unfortunately we have a retirement, so now I have an opening. My entry-level candidate though, that I've selected to a job offer, passed his background psych. See that report today, it went in front of his psychologist, or sorry, his background and his polygraph is what's passed so far. It will go in front of the psychologist here next week, my hope is we can progress through the process. If it meets all the conditions that we set forth for an deputy, we'll extend an offer, I will fill our current vacancy. I have been working with the commissioners. To give permission to extend our workforce out to three additional deputies. We'll not be able to fill those positions until July first, but it's a step in the right direction, as I mentioned before, in two thousand eight. We were a sixty-eight commission deputies for Schley County, currently as we stand today, we're fifty-six, we're funded for fifty-seven positions. So we have shrunk inside despite the county. Growing and the challenges that we're facing. Growing in more sophistication of our crimes, and we see online threats. As well coming into the city, we've had cyber issues, we've had visual currency. Present itself in more complex investigations, we had the incident in Wenatchee. Unfortunately, a subject who lost his life, we had a pretty successful investigation of that, assisted another neighboring agency, which is actually. The location for that crime took place. Happy, we had a decision coming into office to find full staff, our detectives. That has allowed us to, some of our investigations, we want complex law and control, back in our investigative unit. They've done well, as you'll see coming up here in a couple of weeks, you're going to see more releases. One of the other highlights is our drug task force, we recently had one of our largest westerns of the year. Over nine thousand fentanyl pills, over five hundred Xanax pills, we had over two hundred grams of meth received and also seized. We have a set firearm stole, three units were stolen, five told, three stolen, three stolen. And also we were able to locate Wenatchee's firearm suspect at the same time we were taking a drug dealer to custody. Because he happened just to walk by as we were already to grab him, so we just went like this. Yeah, so investigative wise, our task force has been paying minutes work, they've also. Have expanded past just the drug, the drug issues and taking on more of our gang activity, which we've seen more flare up in East Wenatchee and Wenatchee. So we partnered with those agencies along with Moses Lake Police Department, most recently over the summer, and taken to homicide suspects. In custody, so I appreciate their work, Chief Booty is our commander for the drug task force for the lead agency. Sergeant Lewis with our detectives has also continued to push our detectives hard, going to some of these more complex cases, they're doing a good job. And then we talked earlier too about getting our traffic enforcement unit up to full staff. So we are funded for, we currently have three deputies in there, reason being, we want to prioritize patrol. Over our auxiliary services, but that being said, our traffic enforcement unit's been in place since two thousand thirteen. Out of October, we were over four thousand traffic stops for the year. I asked before this, despite running with four deputies in the past, was three thousand. So I'm anticipating that we will hit higher marks, I'm hoping that we'll hit around five thousand for our final contacts. But the public agrees, it seems like you not just unleash our traffic enforcement unit to generate revenue for us. Out of those contacts, eighteen percent of the site. Eighty-two percent received warnings, which is what we're looking for, so traffic enforcement, about education. Enforcement engineering, we do work closely with public works, if we see issues on our county roads. Better design them or take care of problem issues. We're not looking to take care of any budget shortfall or running people tickets, but there are some individuals that are dis deserving. The citations are right, I do believe our traffic enforcement unit is pretty generous, focused as well on education. Which we want to see in a force presence, because I think by asking more out there that we're. Just behaviors, which is what we're wanting to, which that's been plus. We talked about our marine program, after saying we are now officially off probation. We were one of the lead agencies in the state for the marine program, just overall education related. Inspections, hours on the water, that's despite being one of the smaller programs. We also had our marine deputy that was selected by Washington State Parks. As the Marine Law Enforcement Deputy of the Year, Officer of the Year, so that was a huge achievement. And we now open ourselves back up, you know, so we're funding to the state parks, hopefully upgrading some of our fleet, as it is starting to. Timeout a little bit, just off stage, still see, we haven't taken on any water. But outside of that, we are getting back towards looking at other programs that we want to take on, see where we can grow. And they sell promises with community, run for office, these are areas that I want to take on. Which was making sure we fulfill our contracts, we do have all of our SOLOs, a hundred percent assigned to districts. Our conversations with the city, to see what that looks like, they've also. Boys and interest to bring on another SOLO, so I think our SOLO program has shown success. Showed that we've been able to make contacts that we want to see within the district, establish good relationships. Even going out and participating in some athletic events has not allowed me to be injured so far, so. And then lastly, we're getting towards patrol, we've been dealing with some challenges with the amount of individuals we've had on my duty. The number was larger than I'd like to see, despite that, they've accepted all challenges, those that were shot that weren't on the road. We've still had responses compared to the last training I just went to with the FBI and their executive leadership course. A lot of agencies will get on duty, see that the 20 calls stacked up on the screen, they're starting to shift. And if there's some calls, they just say it's been over four hours, just want to close it out, we're not going to return a call, they call back, we do that. That does not happen here, just flying down, so our following is still light, I think we're doing a good job sending a clear message, which we had over the summer. Most people know that Schley County was a little volatile key. Vehicle problems we had over the summer up the trailheads. We did our investigation and we found the individual responsible for it sleeping in her vehicle. Shoreline Washington, and she woke up to see a bunch of Schley County patches. Was running her vehicle and then quickly taking her out of the vehicle, we returned her to Everett. Traded most of the stolen property they had, and then transported her back to Wenatchee, because we like to do emergency transports when reasonable. And then we listened to her jail phone call, she complained to her friends, deputies had commented rescuing her. They said, did King County ever arrest you? They said, no, Schley County drove to King County, found me, took me back up. Get up our storage and brought us back, her friends were in dismay, or were in dismay. To hear that we were involved, she's still, that is not the case so far, some of our bigger counties on the west side. Also, it was good to hear that the message is spreading, and we've given the green lights to our detectives, our patrol unit, task force, and whatever resources you need. The trackers individuals down, we wanted to look up for a bottle, bought by a version of a greater friend. And then Schley County Sheriff's Deputy, but also he works in. I saw that line from General Mattis, but I'm horrified, so we won't correct, but he's still in the roles. Sort of message wise that we want people to know that if you come here to Schley County, leave, fine. This is not a place to do crimes, and we'll do the best we can to hold you responsible, our individual who is burglarizing homes. Out in Lake Wenatchee, I'm not too, we don't want that, but listen to this conversation, they're coming for you. Great message on, so, and other people can relay that out there, great, we're just hoping that we can protect the citizens of Schley County. We're continuing to set high goals for ourselves, beginning to come forward. We'd like to bring our body camera system online, the only agency, the reason it does not have them. That's not for lack of want, just should be a lack of fight, but we are working with the trier's office, hopefully it's secure, we did hear that. Made through the subcommittee, and the federal government can get their stuff in order and solidify their budget, we hope to hear back, positive news. By the end of January, fingers crossed, and our deputies will soon have body cameras, which I think protects us. As an agency, a community, and has the transparency, which is what we're aiming for. We have nothing to hide, very proud of our deputies, the training we received, we're. Save leaders in-state required training, we're one of the. Close locations for patrol tactics such as de-escalation, we went on our I-940, we came online from nineteen. We were one of the first agencies to certify instructors, one of the first agencies that they trained up. And we're one of the first agencies in the state that have almost all of their deputies certified, some body buyers have not gone to court yet. We're getting what we're actually recertifying, when other agencies are trying to figure out how they have certified their deputies to de-escalate before. The law requires them to, so.
Well done.
I think we're heading in the right direction. Proud, ready to see work is being done, thankfully we have good people to support, no matter how hard I use it. But keep it up, I appreciate that, but we'll take any questions, I didn't want to spend everyone else's time. I just want to make it clear that we appreciate our relationship with the state level, we want to maintain online communication. We do view you as customers, we want to make sure that you're happy, see a return for our service. Because we appreciate serving you, and we're hoping that people also appreciate us serving as well.
Any questions?
I appreciate having you guys here, I think you do a tremendous job. Two quick questions. Could you elaborate a little bit on the success of your Behavioral Health Response Unit? Because I know that's a recent addition, and I've heard great things about it, but I'd like to hear more from your side.
Absolutely, thanks for giving me a chance to. Last time, I mean, I wish Hannah Johnson, when Andrew was here, she gets all credit, she's the brains behind the program. She don't want to get the program online, you have to take credit for it when we're in public, but I don't deserve it. But we have pretty many core members of our behavioral health unit, they're online right now, they do respond to us, few calls, subjects for a crisis. We have been identified as a model program for the state, we've had other larger agencies call. And ask, we put them in touch, Chief Booty also works with Hannah Johnson, they'll see that program, we're looking to bring one more on. And we've expanded our services through WASP, that's the Washington Association Sheriff's Police Chiefs, that provides funding for our program. To bring on one additional. An alt divider here, I think we should be, put our application out in our job description, so we're looking to find one for that last spot. And we've expanded out to provide services for Wenatchee, Douglas County, East Wenatchee. So now our near alternative also rides with them, additional ride with us. I was able to get a little vehicle this year, it makes it more mobile, that's a challenge, trying to find a car. I did realize that we work on bigger challenges coming into office, and I have money and I want to buy a product that's not medical, so. We did find one of those, it worked out pretty well, getting on mobile, we've also worked with. Emotional support, that's, that's the term we're looking for, we did, we did write our emotional support. And long line this year, he's doing well, he's still going through all those trainings he's required to have through the states. We're looking forward to, once he hits that point and be one role, that will be able to provide, I'll put it out there. Provide one of the services that he's been trying to do, it's kind of an experiment, so far it's been successful. Well, seems to like Rue, that's been a good addition, the health industry continues to grow. And helped us out a lot, so when I first started the academy, one of the sentiments was, you're a deputy or an officer. You should know things everything, no matter what it is. We weren't equipped to do that, but a lot of times they were saying this in there, and we were escalating situations and. And causing injuries to people that they maybe get injured when they want to make the cars, they were just simply distressed, they were asking for help. We were coming in there, the families were not happy about them, but was that to see if you could evolve, it's a law enforcement profession. Brought this tool online, which I think helps me more and more, if I progress through my career. See more social health services, other programs partnering with law enforcement, that usually be, you say, if you think it for them. They'll certainly not, hearing the stories of social workers being stabbed when they're employed by themselves. So we'll be the safety barrier, they'll provide the services, hopefully get that person out of crisis. And if there is a legal side of it, where we need to deal with law violations, we can deal with that once it's law state-wise, which. Said it's been a success, so I'm about to see, very good move past what it was like when I first started.
Excellent, I really. Nothing but good trend lines. My only other question was. More close to home here, were you able to get funding for our Swift Water, Shalanda County Sheriff's Swift Water crew that? Both you and I have seen some action there, and I know we have a river that doesn't quit.
Yeah, so I do also put in Swift Water in my budget this year, so those that are unaware. I will search and rescue, deputy for Swift Water, I go rescue, search and rescue, so it's near and dear to my heart. And I felt that it was reasonable, we started providing just as much funding for search and rescue. As we do for our SWAT team, because I think we use our, I don't think, I know that we use our search and rescue team a lot more in our SWAT team, which is good. That gives me a nice area, but they just need better equipment, so we have brought two additional side-by-sides online this year. Those are expensive, but that was must-need equipment, another bond replaces some of our outdated ones, we have similar bills coming online. We're actually equipping all of our search and rescue deputies with equipment gear, where they could actually go out in the wilderness. Last appointment, she did not allow people that are available at the time, so I volunteered to go out. And watched my teammate about thirteen hours into the call, pouring rain, turning to hydrothermia, and I'm asking, where is your gear? With nothing being issued, so, made it a priority to make sure that they have their. The rain gear, rain top, rain bottom, mid-layer, base layer, boots, overnight pack, impact. The stuff that you expected, then of course we gave the ten essentials, but. It's been a priority to make sure search and rescue team has the equipment they need, want to be successful. Hopefully next year we'll start venturing into looking at replacements for our health, our care, getting one, timing out. They're not very cheap, so hopefully this year during generous mood, but we will find some just funding to. Continue to support our search and rescue program, from the mountains all the way down to. Rivers, because that was one thing I was pretty happy about this year, they get control. Down the river, people were pretty surprised to see us paddle on our paddles and talking, so. It wasn't too, or very big, so it was just, hey, we had six fatalities in the water here last year. We didn't want to see that trend continue, so we're looking for solutions to hopefully lower that number. Really encouraging people who can't swim to stay on the river, at least wear a life vest, that was a surprising issue. People jumping in the water who cannot swim, so, educational.
Hi, I have one quick question, since. Do you guys prefer if, like if a car is parked in front of my house overnight in the snow, whatever? Do you prefer that we give you a call and say, I live at this address and this car has been parked overnight? You know, when they're supposed, not supposed to.
We provide service twenty-four seven, thirty-sixty-five days a year, we encourage you to call our non-inpersonancy line through River Call. File it generates an incident and, and we'll have our deputies. Do the responsibility to take them on. I know that we're working with the city, also I can play to deal with snow removal, park enforcement for winter violations. Again, I have to say, officials.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions?
I got a question, sir, do you bill King County for the female you're.
We'd like to, but I'd also say too, that King County hasn't been a good partner, they've sent their aircraft over to help us out. They've also assisted us too in the past, we're doing patrols up Editchland on a weekend. So we try to accommodate one another, when and where possible, if I could just wrote a letter for them. Over the summer, hoping that they can secure state funding for a place their aircrafts out, I will be asking for the same. See if I can help you out as well as we, we build ours. And there has been a conversation, one of the works for our commissioners, and we'll need to. Come up with a remedy to help us fund search and rescues, because it is a big burden on our agency. Currently, Washington State does not line a bill, patients that are out there. And the sheriff is by law responsible for all search and rescue efforts within the county. And which makes a challenge, especially when you're trying to have calls. And you have the amount of people that we have going up to the chambers and getting such situations that. Let's say a lot of the problems shouldn't be on the first place, but we're responsible for them, so. The resolution that was proposed was, you should be able to build the counties where that subject resides, so. But I did remember reminding the tread lightly, because our citizens also go out to other counties, I could say I've been. A fun hour here a couple of times, and I don't know if Schley County wants a bill, then you know, a slip or something, so. But a good idea, we'd like to see, talking representative, just come up with solutions, how we could reduce some of the costs. Because once we get our aircraft in the air, we have Cascade medical also come up and assist us, Schley. County volunteer mount rescue, our volunteers also search and rescue, you start adding a lot of costs in with that. I'd like to see another way to fund besides just the county and taxpayers.
Great, appreciate it.
All right, we will now go into our resolutions, ordinance orders, and other business, and we'll start with number seven. Let's move down, and let's hear from.
So. Number seven. Has three different professional service agreements in it. Let me get into. I wrote down the page number, let me see which agreement that one is. That I wanted to discuss. It is the Gray and Osborne Services Agreement. For on-call general engineering planning services for Community Development Department. And. I was comparing that to the next services agreement. Also with Gray and Osborne for consulting services for on-call general engineering and planning services. For Community Development, and my question was. On page eleven of both of those agreements. The description of services is identical, and so I'm curious why we have two different contracts for the same thing. They're both for sixty thousand dollars, and I'm curious. They're both for sixty thousand dollars and I'm curious. What the intention was behind. Having. Service agreements for twenty twenty-four that basically have the exact same services page. Or what they're providing under the addendum number.
Thank, thank you for asking the question. They do do similar reviews, but for different types of work. On-call. Can be a wider range of activities. And then the second one, which is development review and construction inspection. That, that is more related to things like the McDebit plat. They're doing the. Inspections out there on the plats, making sure that construction is happening as it's outlined. And they will do the review associated with those. Those are typically passed through, but there can be activities that we need to pay for. And that's why there's a budget. Associated with that. And then the other type of on-call work that they do for us is review of things like. The hotel. Infrastructure, utility extensions. That type of information. Tom, do you want to add more or clarify further?
Yeah, and currently if I'm wrong, but the construction, inspection, development review are primarily passed through.
Yes, that's right. Yeah, but there are instances where we do need to have budget in there for things that. We needed done. And maybe not so much the applicant or. There were questions on our side related to a project that, you know, might just be more staff training. Or education on the process. So not everything is a hundred percent pass through.
But there's two separate contracts and it's because one is for planning and one is for public works.
There, there's a third one for public works.
So they do. Questions about are for community development. And yeah. Under article two on the first page of each contract, it says the scope of services is associated with Exhibit A. And Exhibit A is identical in both contracts. And that's why I was asking.
Yeah.
So one just on-call.
They're both on-call.
Yeah.
Right.
They're both.
Money spent. It's a ton call.
So it just seems like there was a fair amount of crossover.
Redundancy there.
Yeah. So I just looked at the project list. So for example, the on-call development review contract that is. One of these contracts for develop community development is like the level of Meadows review, the Rock Champ review, La Quinta Springs. So a lot of. Development in that nature. And then the other contract. Which is the basically general engineering and planning. So the on-call engineering planning. That's sort of like this single family stormwater reviews. Is one, for example, that we have current and then a stormwater review for our front street expansion.
Okay.
So yes, they're similar, but one is more.
So are we, are we contracting these services out because we are understaffed internally right now?
That's correct. So Andy's Amtech Backstrom, she's a licensed civil engineer, but we're currently at about. I just penciled out a fifteen point six million dollars in capital projects that was trying to deliver. So Andy does not have a lot of discretion or time to do private development reviews. Same with myself.
Yeah. Historically, these type of projects were reviewed by an outside consultant. It, it used to be a different engineering company. And a few years ago, we went out for requests for proposals and that's where we brought on G and O. Our attorney is recommending me do that request for proposals again with our next cycle. So it just gives an opportunity to re-review who we're using and how the work's getting done and be competitive with our services.
Are we actively seeking staff to fulfill this? To, or at least partially.
Well, these are high qual, a high education. Very detailed engineer level work. Most cities our size don't have an engineer. We're very fortunate to have. Andy on board with us and her focus is just in a different area. So it's not something we have budgeted for as a position.
Okay. I was just wondering, Lilith and Thomas. This goes in the future that a better explanation, explanation could be done upfront. Because there was. There's like seven of these or five of them, you know, and it was like. Where's this? Like send me a couple of phone calls today and kind of got to clarify, but initially I'm wondering. What is this? What is this? So I'd just say. Maybe in the future, there's more of an explanation so that.
It wasn't oversight, Councilmember Reaster. We should have had more of a write-up in these.
Okay.
We know you guys are working on putting the next packet together tomorrow. So it does get bunched up.
Yeah. Just a comment. That's all. I just. Would have been helpful. Yeah.
To pile on a little bit, I understand most small cities probably don't have an on-staff full-time engineer. But we might be, it might be worth. The quick evaluation to see if we're spending. Two hundred thousand dollars a year on private engineering services. Might be time to look at that. Bring it up. Have our own in-house person.
So just for small projects, like our G and O, we just supplemented that agreement and it's a hundred and sixty thousand. But keep in mind, that's since twenty, two thousand twenty-one. And some of that's grants or, and also it's one thing to have an on-staff engineer, but then it's also another to have a design team. So sure, Andy, she's very proficient at CAD, but if she was given a two hundred thousand dollar budget and designed from.
No, I wasn't thinking for design. I was thinking more for review.
Gotcha.
Review services.
Yeah. Do remember that a lot of the charges are pass-through development. Generally pays for development.
Yeah.
Yeah, that can, yeah, it fluctuate. You can be hit with the fire hose and then, yeah. That is all I get. You know, that's. The nice part of having the on-call piece.
I get that.
Any other questions on the? The ones in seven there?
No, I moved to approve the professional services agreements with Gray and Osborne Incorporated. All, all three agreements that are in our packet.
Second, sorry. And seconded. By Jason. Any other questions? All those in favor, let me see your hand. Passed unanimously. Number eight. The blades.
Okay, Lilith, my question on tab number eight, the. Consultant services with Blade Code Services.
Yes.
I remember last, our last meeting, we approved a fifteen thousand dollar supplemental agreement with Blade Code Services. And so. Can you tell me? Why we're going into another contract for forty-five thousand dollars with the same consulting firm?
Uh, this, this will extend us into the upcoming year. So his contract ends in December. And yeah, so hopefully we won't need. This full amount during the upcoming year. Hopefully we're able to fill that building. Official position, which was reposted at the new wage rate. Thank you, City Council, for that approval. We haven't had anyone. Apply yet, but I did have a previous interested. Party contact me. So hopefully they apply and others apply. But in the meantime, this will extend his services.
Okay. So just for clarification, the fifteen thousand back amendment. At our last council meeting was to extend services through the end of this year and this new contract is for the year twenty twenty-four.
Correct.
Can we cancel that if we hire somebody? Yeah, immediately.
We, we could. There'll be some tran, there'll be some crossover a little bit with the Brock. Who's been doing some work with whoever comes on board. But yeah, he won't be on. Much longer and. He's been a great resource and a help to Christian for her training as well. So we want to make sure that it's smooth transition.
But if you hire somebody in February, wouldn't have to keep it to the end of the year or the end. Yeah.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Okay, that's all.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions on eight?
I moved to approve professional services agreement. With Blade Code Services for twenty twenty-four.
Second.
And move, I heard T bore second. All those in favor, let me see your hand. That one passes. And then ten. Question?
Yeah. So my question on this Lilith was basically just a general explanation of. Why are we going into a consulting contract with CWA? Is it that we're understaffed? It seems like some of the tasks are being covered by Blade. So I was just curious why we also needed. This contract for services for plan review for community development.
CWA has been working with City of Leavenworth for ten years or so. They have not been under contract because the amount is generally so small. Again, typically we have a budget, I think, assigned here, but most of their payment is all pass-through. We do occasionally call them on questions. They've been a, a great resource for. Those vague areas of the building code, particularly in the commercial construction. They have quite a bit of knowledge there. They do ninety-five percent of our commercial reviews. And I, I have them do all of our new commercial projects. So like the hotel. They've been solely responsible for that. They have some support staff, as it's noted in the contract. That are customized in different fields of the review. So the depth of their knowledge and, and ability to do these more complex reviews is. Needed and appreciated. Brock or Blade Consulting. Does residential, they'll do commercial. Remodel. Reviews, but I definitely would want to retain CWA. For, for their longevity with our community. They have been really helpful for remodeling buildings. They actually have done work on in the past. So it's, it's been a really good partnership so far. So I, I would request the council approve this contract. Shoot.
Lilith, is that because we're the permitting agency that we're required by the state law to have somebody? That can actually stamp those reviews?
Oh, sorry. I thought I froze for a minute. Yeah, well. Yes, because we are the permitting agency. We, we review all the construction plans and make sure they're consistent with our adopted. Construction requirements and building code requirements for the state. Every plan. Every single plan requires some sort of tweak because there's so much detail in each of them and people catch different things. Does that answer your question or?
Yeah, kinda. I was just saying that because we're the permitting agency. State law requires us to have somebody either in-house or out. To stamp those reviews, correct? And approve them?
I don't know if that's state law. T bore. It's, you know, we, we're not required to have a building official either. I, I, I mean, I know we're not required to have a building official. Are we required to have somebody who's? Stamps the plans or do we, can we take a civil engineer plan set and just say, because it was done by a civil engineer? We're going to accept everything that they've put on there. I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
Entertainer motion.
I moved to approve professional services agreement with CWA consultants.
Second.
Moved by Anne, seconded by Z. All those in favor, let me see your hand. Passed unanimously.
Thank you for the additional explanation, Lilith.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you for your thoughtful questions and discussion.
All right, now we'll go to item fifteen, which is resolution, and that's mis. Numbered in your. Packet, but it's nineteen dash twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four rate and fee schedule. Check down.
Thank you, Council. So you've seen this for several months and this is the final hour. We're going to go ahead and adopt this one tonight. I have not added any additional items to this since the last meeting. I would ask though, if Tom or Lilith may have done any, if they could bring those to your attention.
I don't believe I've made any additional changes. Correctly if I'm wrong, but I think I did the, all the changes before the last time we discussed this.
Yeah, and I've made no additional changes.
Questions?
It's pretty much as it was last meeting.
The last time you, you.
Couple corrections last time, but.
Yeah, you caught a couple. You're making sure you guys.
Mostly just some typos.
Yeah, typos, right. They look good. We cleaned the typos up.
Yeah. Okay, so.
I would entertain your motion.
Leavenworth City Council moves to approve resolution number nineteen dash twenty twenty-three. Dash for the twenty twenty-four rate and fee schedule.
Second. Moved by Anne, seconded by Sharon. Any other questions?
It says eighteen twenty-three. When did we change that?
Yeah, it's on system. Yeah, it was misnumbered. It's nineteen.
Okay, I see it. Okay. I'm sorry. I didn't know this was two-sided. That's fine. Okay. I just want to make sure the number.
We got it.
And it was nineteen.
All right. All those in favor, let me see your hand.
So mandatory.
Happy unanimously. And. The next item is item sixteen, which is now resolution twenty twenty-three, the men grant agreement amendment, Salvy.
Thank you, Mayor. Council. At your April eleventh meeting, you voted to grant Upper Valley Men an amount of six hundred thousand dollars from. Funds that we have earmarked for affordable housing. These funds were to assist in the acquisition of thirty-one rental units to preserve as deed restricted affordable housing. The six hundred thousand dollar contribution from the city along with other donations is being used to acquire four units and two duplexes. That will be made available to households making no more than a hundred and twenty percent of the area median income. Men will be closing on the properties at the end of this month. For counsel consideration, tonight is amendment, is an amendment to the grant agreement. That specifies that the city funds will be used to acquire two eighteen West Whitman Street and one oh six Joseph Street. If approved tonight, this agreement will also be approving the six hundred thousand dollars, which will be taken with men to the closing. And they will be all for those four units. And then at that time, we'll also have men sign. A declaration of trust and a. Sorry, deed of trust and declaration of restriction for those properties.
Where exactly is that six hundred thousand coming from? What pot? Like what?
It's coming from the general fund. But if you remember, you adopted your biannual budget last year, you set aside two hundred thousand dollars per year. To be used for affordable housing.
Yeah.
So this was, those funds were not spent in twenty-one or twenty-two.
Right.
So you dedicated the monies from twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-three for this purpose.
Right. Now, I knew that we did two hundred thousand a year for it, but I was just curious.
It's just coming from the general, right? Now, we don't have our own funding stream yet.
Yeah. Yeah, because my, my consideration would be that. The need for affordable housing is exacerbated by the tourist industry here. If you're, if we were a town without a tourism industry, it would be very different. But the tourism industry does actually create more demand for real estate. And does put pressure on and increases that. So I don't see why the community here, our tax money that comes into the city should be responsible for solving that problem. If you like, tourism should be responsible.
Tourism is solving the problem, Marco, because these funds come from the sales tax, the tourists bring.
Okay, but the general fund also includes our taxes.
It does, which generates about seven hundred thousand dollars a year.
Yeah, I hear that. That was just my, my comment.
Which pays for the sheriff, maybe.
Maybe.
And sheriffs. And we are working at trying to give them the opportunity to help us. Our, our tours. That's, that's the long-term goal, but we have to get approval from the state legislature to do.
Yeah, and I'd want to see that because I would love to see our affordable housing program be sustainable.
Yeah.
And, and obviously be.
And grow.
And grow. That's a very important point to me because we do need to address it regardless of where the money comes from. I just think that the bigger, the bigger gorilla in the city is the one generating the revenue. Which, like you said, is probably contributing most of that.
I would entertain.
I want to thank Kalen. Is she here? Oh, there. I thank her for taking us around on the tour. It was very interesting. And I learned a lot from that trip around. And my other question is, in the resolution, it says acquire four units and two.
And my other question is, in the resolution, it says acquire four units and two duplexes. So my question about that is, is that four units in each of the duplexes? Cuz it says acquire four units. But it's two. In, okay, I just wanna make sure I, I understand. Okay, thanks, thanks, and thanks, Kaylin.
Thanks, Kaylin.
Do you want? Prop be specific in this motion?
It's included, it's included, it's included in the agreement.
You don't want it, you don't need it in the motion?
Don't need it in the motion because it's in the agreement. So if somebody wants to just.
Leavenworth City Council moves to approve resolution twenty twenty twenty-three. And authorize its signature and authorize the mayor to sign all documents to close.
Second.
Moved by Jason, seconded by Marco. Any other discussion, questions?
Actually, I was gonna ask, um, on the, maybe Kayla could answer this, is this, are these folks? If you can, anyway, are they already living there, that it's gonna stay there, or is that the situation?
Well, so, we, one will be displaced who's currently there. Over the first, basically, the course of the first year, we'll be adjusting people's rent based on their income. Um, so people who are low, low income, their rents will still stay very low.
Okay.
And then if people can afford one, then their rents will go up, but they'll still be under that thirty percent mark. Uh, and then as those units turn over, there will be an income cap associated rent that, so. Uh, we wanna make sure we're balancing, keeping people and not displacing anyone who's currently living there, but also making sure that. The, you know. Grant funds and community donations that are being used are being used to support folks who really need affordable housing.
Right, okay, that's, I was wondering about that hundred and twenty percent, so, okay.
Okay, any other questions? All those in favor, let me see your hands. Passes unanimously. Next is an ordinance sixteen eighty-five, amending the twenty twenty-three budget and twenty twenty-four salary schedule. Chantel.
Alright, thank you, Mayor Florrie. Council members, uh, the final quarterly amendment for this year includes all actions already prior approved by the council. So there's nothing additional at this time from staff requests. And exhibit B includes the entire salary schedule for the whole city to be adopted. We have a five percent increase included across the board for union and non-union employees. And then we have the separate section for the MOU that was signed that you guys approved for the building official and the senior planner. At this time, we have not increased any part-time rates. Uh, we currently have flexibility within the existing rates for parks employees. Sorry about the beeping. Uh, for the pool employees, we'll definitely be visiting that with the PRSA. They'll be meeting in January, we'll talk a little bit and see where we landed with the budget. Um, but at this point, we just don't have any recommendation for any changes.
Any questions?
I don't believe I can vote on this one, right?
You can vote on it, Sharon. You can, if you'd like, um, it, it's not specific to you, it is just rates in general for pool employees.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't doing that. Okay.
We'll slap you down.
Yeah. Thank you.
Leavenworth uh, City Council moves to adopt ordinance sixteen eighty-five. Final budget amendment for twenty twenty-three and salary schedule for twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Wow.
I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say that was clean. Zee moved and Clint seconded with a few others adding. Um, any other discussion? All those in favor, let me see your hand. Passes unanimously. Um, another ordinance sixteen eighty-six, our winter parking regulations, we talked about this last time, Selby.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. At your November twenty studies, study session, we discussed amending the code. To extend on-street winter parking restrictions from three AM until seven AM to midnight until seven AM in the residential areas. Now, these are um, from the dates of November fifteenth through March thirteenth. Uh, this change is being proposed because public work staff begins their snow removal operations from city streets at midnight. And having the roadways clear vehicles increases the efficiency of snow removal operations. Uh, further, the Shlain County Sheriff's Office indicated, and even uh. Uh, Sheriff, Sheriff Morrison uh, mentioned tonight that they would assist the city in patrolling the residential areas for parking. Should the re, the restriction be extended to midnight due to the nature of their overnight shifts. Um, prohibited on-street parking in the commercial areas will remain at the existing three AM to seven AM.
Any questions?
Leavenworth City Council moves to adopt ordinance sixteen eighty-six, winter parking regulations.
Second.
Moved by Anne, seconded by Sharon. Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, let me see your hands. Passes unanimously. Item nineteen is uh, action item to lease uh, to the Housing Authority of Shlain County, City of Wenatchee. Um, the P two lot, Selby.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Uh, Kevin King from the Housing Authority of Shlain County and City of Wenatchee, and Isabel Garcia from the Office of Rural Farmworker Housing. Have met with the city council three times this year to discuss the concept of a mixed use. Of workforce housing project at P two, or the Blueitt Parking Lot. After the last presentation to the city council on number, November fourteenth. Staff worked with our city attorney and bond counsel to review the existing debt on the property and any restrictions that prevent this project from moving forward. I'll note that we still owe just under two million dollars on the overall property, so we paid off about half of the note. After these discussions and conversations with the housing authority, the commercial component of the project has been removed. You'll still see some language in there in the lease, I would like to make an on-the-form motion that we just remove that entirely. The uh, we spoke to council, uh, our city attorney today, as well as uh, Kevin King, they have no uh. No plans to build a, a space that would be used for an incubator. Run by the Wenatchee Valley Community College or anything like that, that was just a, a provision that our city attorney thought we could put in there. Um, but it wouldn't be prudent to, to build that out for that purpose, so we'll be removing that uh, altogether from, from that lease. Um, after these discussions, we have removed that, this will make it easier for the project to finance. And maximize the number of public parking spaces that would result from the project. Uh, for council's consideration tonight is a lease that will give the housing authority site control. Um, which it needs to complete feasibility and to begin fundraising for the project. And a reminder, this will now add three levels of parking and two levels of housing, and I believe it's fifty-two units, is that right, Kevin?
Right now, fifty-five units.
Fifty-five.
Yeah, but we'll be maximizing that as much as possible as well, based around not having the commercial component as well.
I forwarded you all the lease um, changes on Friday, they were not ready in time for the packet.
Any questions?
Yeah, uh, go ahead.
Oh, this isn't a question, but um, I would like to see, and I'm not against it, I would like to see this. Not voted on tonight and brought back in a study session, and maybe that's the only thing on the study session, so that. We on the council are clearer and understand. Everything to do about this and what's happening here and what's happening there. Like I said, it's not a thing opposed to it, it's just I think we need more time to actually study, I know I need. Before a vote.
I would agree with Sharon, the fact that, I'm not sure what we've got. Um. Can we even, um, can we even turn it over to the uh. Authority with a two million dollar bond on, how does that work?
Can, um, and our city attorney is on uh, the Zoom with us tonight to a, address that. That question, but my understanding is we paid off about half the debt. We could basically assign what debt is left to the P one lot, and P two then is free and clear. Yeah, bait and switch.
Hmm, so.
We pay out part, it's just like what we're doing with Mend, we're paying part of, you know, we're getting them to pay part of their, their. Units completely, and the others will still carry, you have it, those are, they have their own deed.
Those two units, right? But this is, is, is one deed for the whole piece. Cuz that's what the bond is on, is the whole piece, right?
True.
My question is.
Let me answer that question, if you wish.
Yeah, that'd be great, Tom.
Okay. There is no restriction uh, in the bonds. Um, or any of the associated documents that prevent a transfer of the property. And in particular, a transfer to another governmental agency. There is one document, it's document number twenty-three, Selby has a copy of it. Uh, and that document does um, prohibit. Use of bond proceeds directly or indirectly for a private business. Uh, and so that's one of the reasons why the commercial um, was um, eliminated. And in talking to bond counsel, they indicated that um, the public parking. Which was one of the reasons uh, why the bonds were issued, needs to be preserved. So the current proposed arrangement in this lease of a transfer to the. Housing Authority without any consideration back. Preserving um, the public parking at the site. And um, eliminating a commercial use to satisfy that no private business covenant in document number twenty-three. All of which is in the current document satisfies the bond covenants and the documentation from that twenty thirteen bond. Uh, so this proposed lease for affordable housing is within the city's authority. And as proposed in this document, it, it is acceptable under the twenty thirteen bonds.
Tom, I, maybe you can help me out, cuz I'm hearing two different things and I'm having trouble bringing them together. The first thing I'm hearing is that. We could take the two million dollars of remaining bond. Exposure that we have, transfer it to P one and P two is in the, and P two is in the clear. Um.
I didn't say that.
That we can't do the retail because of the bonds for P two.
We cannot do commercial anywhere on the site, whether it was P two or P one. If it provides a private business um, benefit. And that's a restriction that is in one of the bond documents from twenty thirteen. And um, it, it applies to the entirety of the site, and here we're talking about the P two portion of it. You know, it might be possible, uh, and I think this is where Selby was going. That if we had paid, if we pay the bonds down sufficiently. That we might be able to uh, work with bond counsel. Uh, to get an opinion from them, where on a pro-rata basis. It might be possible to have commercial or private benefit from a portion of the property. So long as the remainder of the property remain public. Um, sufficient to be allocated to whatever the remaining of balance owing on the bonds would happen to be. Um, but. To go back to my basic point, uh, the proposed lease here uh, is within the city's authority to do. The elimination of commercial uh, satisfies document twenty-three. And um, you know, uh, we can proceed on the basis of the proposed document. And not violate the twenty thirteen bond.
And I think what the, the, the gist of it is that we would still be getting. I mean, we would still be on the hook for the bond, but we would still be getting the parking revenue that would go to pay off the bond, so we're not. We'll still have the same funding stream that we're using now to pay off the bond. We just wouldn't put that on the affordable housing, it would be taken care of.
I'm sorry.
So by, by the part.
Right, but, and the parking wouldn't be considered commercial. Now, what if we put retail?
This is, this is not a, a revenue bond, this is a general obligation bond of the city. It had it been a revenue bond for a parking utility. Uh, the discussion might be somewhat different, but this is a general obligation bond, so the um. The, the, the requirements are not as strict, and uh, the proposal here, the proposed lease. Uh, obligates uh, preservation of the same level of public parking is, is out there presently.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, before I express some of my hesitations, I would first like to start with. I'm really excited about the conversation associated with affordable housing downtown. Uh, the location is exceptional for our community. Being right on a transit line and being associated with the construction of additional parking, which we need desperately. Um, all of that said, I have concerns regarding. The elimination of a commercial component on commercially zoned property. I think that. Commercial endeavors. Should be developed on commercial property, and we only have so much commercial property that's available to us for. Future commercial development, um, it's the highest and best use of this property. And I, I am hesitant to um, be excited moving forward on this lease. Knowing that the commercial portion of this is being eliminated and not being considered. Um, it's right on the highway, it's where commercial development should be. Um. I also have some concerns about the option for purchase portion of this agreement. Um, that ultimately allows for the. Uh, Housing Authority to purchase the property for a dollar. Um, this is a multimillion dollar property um, that continues to appreciate, and I guess I have some concerns about whether or not. We have some legal obligations associated with that, is this the gifting of public funds, um, as it was purchased with public funds? Um, and uh, how does that ultimately play out? Um, because we could clearly sell this property for a large sum of money, um, and selling it for a dollar. Doesn't necessarily seem to be um, the best use of this property.
The, the reality is, and you're, I mean, it is a big gift of, but it's a gift towards. Housing, which is a, a public.
There is a specific statute which allows us to transfer this property to the Housing Authority with or without charge. For affordable housing. That's why I've indicated that this is within the city's authority to do. This would not be deemed a gift of public property. The policy issues are for you to debate, but from a legal standpoint, as I've indicated, uh, this type of arrangement is within the city's authority.
And right now, what we have, we don't have a funding stream, this is, so what we have is property, that's what we can give. To help enable a project is, right now, is property. At some point, hopefully. We'll have a funding stream that can also be applied.
Do these requirements for this property use expire once we've paid off the bond?
I had the same question.
Okay.
Yeah, these encumbrances go away once we pay off the bonds, yeah.
Oh, yeah, like, so. Let's say they buy.
The requ, the requirement for parking and the requirement of no commercial, those stem from the bond documentation.
Yes.
Okay, but they're not in perpetuity, Tom?
Once the bonds are paid off, they go away.
So going back to Selby's. Suggestion at the beginning of this conversation, should we? If, if we subdivided this and created two separate parcels, and we moved the remainder of the bond onto P one. And unencumbered P two. Would it be possible to add the commercial component back into the project?
Possible, yes, there's a possibility, it would require our bond counsel to do some sort of. Fine accounting of what is going on, so it might be possible, yes.
Great question.
What about, um, to further to that question? Will the process then be of gifting the property to the Housing Authority if it's not exclusively for parking and affordable housing?
It's still ours to do.
So long as the pro, the, the criterion that dictates. Whether you can transfer it without cost to the Housing Authority is what their use, the Housing Authority's use of the property will be. If their use is for affordable housing. Then the city has authority to transfer the property to them as a separate governmental agency. For affordable housing with or without consideration.
If they buy it, what happens to the parking revenue?
No, we're with, well, for the ones not.
We only get to keep the seventy-nine spaces we currently have.
But if, if we give up parking. And they get the revenue from that parking, isn't that gifting of public funds?
No, we're not, they're not getting revenue for parking.
We don't know that.
See.
Okay, and my my other question is for you. How long will it take to build this project? If you if you get it, everything lines up, all your doctor, how long does it take to build it?
There's some question marks about that. It probably takes from around breaking to construction completion between one and one and a half years.
And would we lose all the parking revenue of that piece of property during that time? Is that gifting of public funds?
Since we can out, since we can outright give them the property in its entirety. Subject to the bond covenants, I would not view that as a gift of public funds. Obviously, when you transfer the property, you you give up the income rights associated with it.
This is why I think that it should go back to a study session. Again, not opposed to it. Um, but to go back to study sessions so we can see more lines uh of changes and and be able to. Gather all this stuff together and maybe that's the only thing on a study session. So we have the time we need to ask all the questions we need by looking at. Um, by looking at things.
I think. Yeah, I mean, and and I'm not gonna be here, but I think this needs to be looked at and say and ask the question, what do we want? What do we get out of this? Besides housing, I get that, but what do we want and what are we giving up and how does this? How can you blend this together to everybody's happy? Because right now, I don't think everybody's happy. But in in the big picture here, I I kinda wanna thank Kevin and Caitlin.
Yeah, yeah.
Taking and running with the ball in affordable housing because it does take a lot of guts to do what you're doing and make this work. And it's a, it's a distinct and dire need we have in the city to create workforce and affordable housing. However, as Anne stated earlier, it's a valuable piece of property. And it is the goose that could lay the golden egg. In a sense, it could generate revenue if we used it as a revenue generating property. And that revenue could then be more formatively used to fund. Fund affordable housing down the line. So let's say we build it as a mixed use, some retail, some regular rental and some affordable rental mix. And then get a bigger bang for our buck, taking that revenue from that building that it generates as lease money. And putting it somewhere else to generate money annually and a bigger sum for more workforce housing somewhere else in the city. Because that piece of dirt is super valuable. Putting it on another piece of dirt, we could be generating affordable funding, affordable housing um. Revenue every year from that piece of property that could become the fund that you're hoping for, Mayor. And I I fully agree with that. This is a. Complete opportunity to not kill the goose, but you know, give it a home and let it lay its golden egg and fund. And fund affordable housing in perpetuity. Yeah, thank you. Put a roof over its head and feed it good grain. So I I think this could be a mix for now, like give it some some workforce and affordable housing, but make the majority of it, design it to be. Profitable. And then there's other lands, other places, other landowners here who are willing to engage with us in cooperative development agreements. To do more affordable housing and kinda mix it in all over the city and we'd have money to play with.
So I have a question for you, Kevin, if you don't mind me putting you on the spot.
All for it.
I don't have a large background in how housing authorities operate and these types of lease agreements, so I'm just learning as I go. Is it fairly standard to go into a lease agreement with an option to purchase? Um, or. Are there some agreements that continue with municipality or some government agency? Continuing to own and leasing the property in perpetuity and there. Or are there opportunities for a housing authority to go out for additional grant services that could help purchase the property so that. Um, a municipality isn't just basically giving away a multimillion dollar property to a housing authority for development?
There's two ways that you can go about it. If the property was just for sales, purchase and sale agreement, who purchased the property and just becomes autos? City really doesn't have anything to do with it after that, right? This way, the cities were partnering with Leaven. And I guess the best way for you to swim the housing authority's perspective, we're here for that. Right? I mean, I'm all about affordable housing and I know that's what Leavenworth needs right now. You guys need workforce housing. That's what I'm here to support. The city of Leavenworth says, Kevin, that's what we need. Want the housing authority to come in, build affordable housing for workforce housing in Leavenworth. I am ready to go. And my team is ready to go. And I've got an amazing group that are already ready to work this project and are excited to get to get to it. And so. It would be my desire for for folks to vote on it today. I I've been, I've been speaking with this group for almost a year now. Um, and I understand it might not go the way that I would want it to. Uh, but if it was my choice and you said, Kevin, do you want us to wait and have more conversation about it and come back to it? I would say no, I wanna hear what this group has to say. I've laid everything on the table for you guys and. Um, I don't have anything new to present. And so. I'm ready to hear what you guys have to say, if you're willing, if you're ready to make that decision. You guys wanna have a study session, I'll come back as many times as you guys want me to.
I think there's a project there that can satisfy multiple. Needs and desires, and I think we need to figure out a way to pay off that bond somehow so that we can have mixed use. I agree with Anne and Marco have said, it's a. It's one of our most prized properties. It's underdeveloped and we've been sitting and chewing on what to do there for a long time. And when we saw your presentation, I think. Generally, we were nodding. We wanted more details, but with the loss of the mixed use, the commercial aspect, it feels like a forgotten opportunity. And two million dollars is a lot of money to me personally, but in this city, it feels like two million dollars shouldn't be a barrier. To free up options for that property forever. So I, I think we need to go through a more rigorous alternatives analysis, given that. Challenge that we've been presented. I think there's a project that will happen that's similar to the last version that we saw.
Sure.
But it deserves more of our time and more of our thoughtfulness. And we are gonna have three new council people up here, and I think. It'd be fair to them to let them weigh in and uh have some ownership on that decision.
Kevin, just uh something, I I all, I always thought from the beginning that workforce housing that we would be building was for. Our workforce in Leavenworth. But is it possible that, let's say we had a, you know, we had. A building or a whatever. Is it possible that none of our own workforce could end up in there? Because I I I thought we were building just for Leavenworth. I didn't realize it's. That it could be somebody who won't actually, you know, or not that I'm against somebody who won't actually live in here, but.
I suppose it would be possible, not plausible. And I think that even if folks did move that it were working in other cities. If they were desired to be to to employ them in Leavenworth, the area that they live. Um, it being both low income and workforce housing, the people who are talking about housing, service workers. People who work in hospitality industry, those types of things. And so I think they would be most interested in working in the town they reside in.
Yeah, I just, I just didn't realize that could happen.
Band-aid than anybody or a particular area and um based on their residency. Yeah, you can't discriminate, but I get it.
Kevin, I was wondering if if we're taking that floorway uh for mixed use. Is that, that increase the rental units that can be built?
Yes, it will definitely increase the rent.
We just don't know. We have fifty-five, it would go higher, like another floor.
Um, well, there's, there's a a chance for some additional parking in there. There's a chance for some additional rentals in there. And really, we'll be. Yeah, okay. Going back to our architect and and saying, hey, we've got this first. We do, what do we do with that?
Okay.
And the other thing that I will also say is what is built into this lease is that. Um, any of the design that we're doing on this project, we would be bringing back to city council and and. And letting you guys know what we're doing. It doesn't just give us carte blanche to build whatever we want. It's built into the lease that we can give the city council about. Time aspects as well.
And again, if you guys remember from the last discussion too, one of the issues around the parking was they were using current standards that. We currently have smaller. Units and smaller, and I don't know if any of you lately have tried to park over in Seattle area, but. They have very tight parking units and you could get a lot more in than what our current standard is.
They don't.
If you were building.
They don't drive pickup trucks. They don't drive pickup trucks. That's yeah, not my system. It's not.
I'm just saying we could get, we could get more parking than they had in that design if we reexamine what we.
Yeah, I think our parking problem is more suited towards satellite parking structures than downtown park.
So, uh, what I'm hearing, let's take it back, get another study, look at the possibilities of whether we can. Do that mix.
Figure out how to make it mixed use.
Yeah, and all I, all I gotta say is that even if if you think of giving away. A large expensive chunk of land, first of all, we wouldn't give it all away because we would keep the parking that 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 would generate. And potentially, you're talking about some other stuff. But if you break that subsidy down into what we'd be given per unit, again, um. That's about as good as we could get in terms of buying. You know, some workforce affordable housing.
I get the sense most of us are on the same page there.
Yeah.
I don't think that's the part of the debate.
Yeah, but that property could be used to generate revenue for future.
But but it's also important to remember that. That highest and best use is is in the eye of the beholder and if the. Most needed use for Leavenworth right now is housing for its workforce, that may still rise above. What could be developed there commercially in terms of the highest and best use for the community?
If I may, I, I don't wanna belabor anyone else's thoughts. I mean, I personally, I think I don't wanna. Reuse anyone's words, uh, Marco, Anne, Jason, you two specifically, um, I. Your thoughts were very much in alignment of where I'm at regarding this. I've sat through a lot of presentations here on city council and I have to say. The presentation that you gave on this development and this opportunity. Is the first and maybe the only one where I've seen everyone in the audience break out into spontaneous applause at the end. So I don't think anyone is. Arguing the need for something like this. I think that the excitement around it, and certainly the excitement that I felt around it. Revolved around the fact that it's just hit all the bases. It was mixed use. There was a retail component where. We are in a retail area right down there. It hit our workforce housing needs. There's parking involved. It looked beautiful. I, it hit all the, it it hit all the bases. So. I, at least what I'm hearing the talk about, let's take a moment and discuss this further. I know sometimes that feels like analysis. Prolysis by over analysis, but I think that. I think it's worth. An extended thoughtful conversation on how we can move forward in a way. That still retains that same sense of of real universal excitement about this. And I don't. I would hate for us to to look at this as a partial opportunity or an opportunity partly lost.
Well, the city council hasn't had much actual analysis time. And you've seen a lot of amazing presentations. We love the concept, but once you start digging into. The details of an agreement, it's very different.
Yeah, so anyway, I I, I wouldn't want this to be seen as kicking the can down the road. I think the the need is real. And the plan has definite merit, very much so. I just think it it. It merits a little bit more discussion and thought.
I wondered about also, um, I liked Elmer Larson's concept in his letter where, um, and have we thought of any of that? Um, getting together with Schlein County, Cashmere, you know, some of the Pechastan um down the road where there is. Quite a bit of property yet and um seeing if we can't do something in the line of affordable housing. I'm not trying to get it out of Leavenworth just to get it somewhere. Have we looked at that at all?
There's been a number of conversations about, yeah, other, other areas and stuff that. We're not gonna provide all the housing we need. So Pechastan and right, even in those. Um, those have all been in the conversations with the county and and um, yeah, they'll, they'll. They'll be further. So this isn't, this isn't, it's not an either or, it's gonna be a both and.
Yeah.
Kind of situation.
Well, we're not privy to any of those conversations, so I wondered if they were even going on.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, perfect. All right.
So there was no motion on the table, correct?
No, we'll, we'll bring it back for, right?
Yeah, yes, please, please do.
No, it has to continue.
Just curious if council would be willing to meet on a non-meeting night. Because we typically have other, quite, quite a few things to dedicate to study sessions. Um, if we add a special meeting or a special study session just to dive into this topic for two hours.
I'm good.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I'd be willing to do that.
I can't. I won't be here, but is there a way that Selby, you could work with Kevin and others to see what our alternatives are to. Satisfying that bond? The two million dollar bond.
Thank you.
That's, yeah, I think that's part, that's a big, yeah, a solid part of it.
Yeah, and it's any.
Conversation with the bond council to see what our options were.
Yeah, have we had any revenue generating model potentials done with that place? That would be great to have a business model, look at retail space and like partial actual, you know, market level leases. As in addition to workforce housing to see if instead it could be a sustainable model that that could fuel your next project. That'd be amazing.
So kinda piggybacking on Marco's idea, I'd be curious to know what our options are possibly for condominiumized ownership. Where, where, right, where, where maybe the city owns the commercial spaces and leases out the units and the housing authority owns. All of the workforce housing units and some of the parking and then we own some of the parking that we already have. And having joint ownership through condom minimization.
The note that I wrote down to myself is, we build the parking and retail, we lease them or sell airspace above, they build housing above.
Yeah, I I just think that all of the options are worthy of a conversation for us and maybe. Doing a little bit of research before we all gather again to have that conversation.
And they manage that above.
So, yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
We build and manage you that.
And if we're talking about that, maybe we could expand this and not just talk about P one or just not just P two. Make a larger project, maximize the parking that we can build there, because that is where people want.
Right.
So when you talk with the bond attorney. Were you asking, one, is there a cost to transfer the debt from one property to the other, what that is? And does the interest rate change? Do they rewrite it or do they just transfer it?
Yeah, we'll ask those questions, keyboard. Thank you.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Excuse me, Mayor, are you gonna open this up for public comment?
Um, well, it doesn't, we're not really um addressing that. We we've got nothing on the floor right now. So there's nothing, so there'll be a.
This is an issue and it should be open for public comment.
When, when we make a decision, there'll be public comment, but there's no, there's no decisions being made here. So that's.
I don't understand that. It doesn't say you have to have a decision to have public comment, does it?
No, we're, we're, we don't have something on the floor. We we're, we're setting this aside for another time. So we're gonna move on to, um, we've still got some action.
Why don't you have somebody here that we can address and talk to? Right, what are you, what are you hiding?
We're not hiding, we're saying.
You are, you won't let us speak. What do you call that?
No, because there's not something to it speak to.
Yes, there is.
When there's something to speak.
On this agenda, it says you're gonna do this, so that is.
Well, but we decided not to. We're, we're, we're putting it off, okay? So you'll have your opportunity when it comes before us, but. Um, we're going to the next action item, which is uh on-call snow removal bid award.
Right. Now, members, good evening. This action I am performing this evening is associated with our on-call snow removal contract. This is a cookie cutter of last year. In fact, when we solicited the bids, we had the exact same contractors putting names on it. Uh, KRCI was the apparent little bidder. They were deemed responsive. And just for comparison's sake. We used uh KRCI last year to haul snow out of our parking lots. They provided uh about seventy-seven thousand dollars worth of effort. Last year.
How long did that take to use up? About a week?
It was about a week, not long.
No, no, I'm just curious because I wanna make sure this number is sustainable and that if it doesn't say not to exceed, it just says the amount. So I was curious if. There would be a not to exceed number or.
Right, um, so we we're treating this like a construction contract.
I get it.
So there's bid quantities, so we can't exceed quantities, but for the sake of transparency, I wouldn't feel comfortable going to the council. If I exceeded this contract amount without at least getting violated from council, so.
Right, and input from Mother Nature. I hear you. That's what I'm concerned about.
Like we've seen, some weird stuff. Anyway, thank you for answering.
For sure. And again, just to reiterate. The co, the requirements, the contract, the contractor has to mobilize within twenty four hours. So, um, they're. They're willing and able and will be ready next day and meeting.
Um, do we have to provide a place for them to put that snow?
Yes, typically.
Where is that?
Yeah, so right now we, we have basically two viable sites. One's the cemetery and second is a boat launch property at East.
Okay.
We will say, say that, that, that those areas are limited source.
Yeah, very closely.
Have unlimited source like.
No, but I think that the boat launch was a, it held quite a bit of snow.
It is, for sure. We don't, we, I mean, we filled it, snow again, filled.
You did a great job there. Thank you.
Forgot that term.
Good. Just so I understand this. Um, the, the, the thing is for eighty eight thousand nine hundred sixty six dollars ninety five cents.
So, good question. So.
If, no, but I mean, if we only have four snowfalls. We only pay for those four snowfalls. Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
This asking, so there's a chance that depending on the winter, we've got either services or if it goes beyond this again, I'll bring this to the council.
Okay, okay, stand by.
Yeah, it's prudent that we do it.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Tool and toolbox.
Okay.
Leavenworth City Council moves to award the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four on-call snow removal bid and authorize the mayor to execute a small public works contract between the city and KRCI LLC in the amount of eighty eight thousand nine hundred sixty six dollars and ninety five cents.
Second.
Moved by Jason, seconded by Anne. Any other discussion? All those in favor, let me see your hands. Passed unanimously.
Appreciate that.
Um. Item twenty one, authorizing an additional parking enforcement officer, Selby.
Thank you. Shannon Lemmons, do you want to? Do you want to present this?
Hi, council.
Hi, Shannon.
Hi, Shannon.
I'm Shannon Lemmons. I'm the parking manager for the city and you're being asked to consider an additional parking enforcement officer for our team. Currently, we have two full-time employees. To cover the city and we contract heavily with Pacific Security. I'd like to add another full-time employee to our team so that I can manage the, uh. The department the way it should be. Right now I spend an awful lot of my time running around outside and doing some other things that are much needed for the city. I will continue doing those, but I do think that, um, by adding another person, uh, my time would be better spent administratively, which is what we need. Um, our organized effort is, um, to help get the partner in the right place and we do, um, that every day. We also enforce the code. And help get the, get partners into the right place by, um, reducing overcrowding, which we see during our busy time. The city's parking program has, um. Has had great success. And I see us continuing that with the staff that have additions. This new position would be funded after the apartment progress. Do you have one?
I do. Um, Shannon, I think we'll be starting to see these, uh, neighborhood parking zones. I think I assigned on to one in my neighborhood, so. With this new position, will you be adequately staffed to? Manage those? Provide oversight?
That is one thing that we are looking to do is to add stuff to manage our residential zones better and to get that out there. I don't see us going completely away from security, so I do see us still using them a bit. Uh, but yes, that is part of our, our, um.
Would we rely on Pacific Security less? With the state position?
Yes.
Okay. It's money savings.
Shannon, do you have an idea what? Cost of this position would be?
Um, it would be, um. The same. You.
Um, I mean, it's in your packet, actually.
Tab seventeen on the salary schedule.
There's not the other twenty one.
All right.
Parking enforcement officer line item.
Alright, okay, great.
So that would just be two.
Hmm, just, just to clarify for you, the salary schedule is just the salary. It's not the benefits. Um, this type of position probably runs somewhere between seventy five and eighty thousand dollars a year. And the parking fund has. Well over a million in excess revenues each year over its expenses currently without capital projects included. So there's definitely enough, uh, funding within the fund to manage an additional position.
Yep.
Are we ready? I want to, I want to do this one. I see Shannon all summer working so hard. The Leavenworth City Council moves to allow the city parking manager to hire an additional parking enforcement officer.
Second.
Moved by Sharon, seconded by Anne. Any other questions? All those in favor, let me see your hand. Passed unanimously.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Shannon.
Shannon.
Great to see that, um. Apartment thrown.
Yeah, for sure.
All right, reports.
Yo, that's me. Okay. Um, let me see why I put in. I wanted to congratulate Shane who's here and will be with us next month.
All right.
Um, on November twenty ninth, did the backpacking lenses for school. Children who qualify, um, for the Osborne playground, playground group, we are waiting for updates from our consultant Quinn. The committee is at the point where we would like to see the plan, which is our chosen playground equipment for the, um. Park, we just see it like flat on a piece of paper. We'd like to see it up where we can actually have a better vision. So. Um, we will have our next meeting this Thursday, providing we have more info from Quinn. On December fourth, the solid waste council, I was unable to attend. To do, uh, to, to attend that meeting due to doctor's appointments and what actually, but from the minutes. I see reminder that the solid waste management plan was adopted. I don't know if you guys remember it, but it was about that thick. And many, many, many pages. And so, um, I just wanted to let you know, um. That it reminds you that's been adopted for six years, I think it is. The tire cleanup at the Dryden Transfer Station in October was a huge success with approximately two hundred ten. Tons of tires. They only expected sixty ten, six, sixty tons. Um, which were brought into the facility where they were loaded into trucks and hauled to an incinerator for fuels. Uh, chipping brush yards. Is complete for twenty. Twenty four, a reminder that Leavenworth chips can only go to Witten due to the apple maggot quarantine. Um, I'm going to have it ever disappears. You just happen to forever.
I don't know.
December fifth, the Upper Valley Historical Society Board met, looking over our yearly calendar of all museum activities for twenty twenty four. Um, the Glocken, we had a Glocken Spiel update from Matt Cade. Does anybody here raise your hand if you know what the Glocken Spiel is? So some don't. On the, the old Tannenholm, I can't, Tannenbaum building, if you go down to Ninth Street and you start walking down City Hall. Building when you get to our cities, the city, the city streets, when you get to the building at the very end up above. There used to be a little, it's, it's there, it just doesn't work. Um, and the doors would open on the, was it the half hour? And little dancers would go around in a circle, not real ones, but little dancers around a circle and would play music. Well, it's been broken for years and so, um, uh, gentleman by the name of, where is it? Tom Phillips will be doing the work needed. And it was really interesting because we had this close-up picture where. Uh, on the, in the back of the Glocken Spiel and it was opened up. And so we could, just like we're looking in there and we're there and these figures are really about that high. And they, um, they, they're in bad shape, but he's going to fix out all up and pretty soon. You'll, you'll go down the street and see that Glocken Spiel opening its doors. Um, on December sixth, we did the backpacking again in the morning. We started eight forty five. We're always looking for more, more volunteers. Um, and, uh, this, this, um. Wednesday tomorrow will be our last one until after Christmas at the Christmas break. Um, let me see whatever here. Planning commission meeting. That was, I think, the best planning commission meeting I've, I've ever been at. Everything was really clearly stated and I could understand what they're talking about with all the cottage housing. And, um, they do a fabulous job. Those guys work so hard. Oh, and there's Colin sitting right there, so. Wave at Colin or give him applause. They work really hard. I don't always like what they come up with, but. They work really hard. Um, on December ninth, um, I volun, volunteered to work the holiday bazaar at the United Methodist Church. And, um, I haven't had an update for the Friends of the Pool in a while. Maybe Jason, let me get to him or, um, uh. Marco might have something to report on anything that's going on there. Um, and, um. That's all. We're here. It's December twelfth at our last meeting. I appreciate, um. T-Born and Marco and Jason's work that they've done on the council. Um, and, um, so total applauding and basically. I guess I would say, um. Oh, and January first, we should be able to get in the fest hall to start the walking program in the early morning, Mondays through Thursdays.
Say January first. It takes the chamber about a week to clear.
No, they are out of there on the first. They were last year. Okay, well, I'm going to get over there with the web. We want us to get in there. So anyway, thanks for listening and Merry Christmas.
Right.
Of an appreciation app for the three of you serving. Thank you very much. Thank you. A pleasure and an honor. Uh. Yeah, I'm going to make Sharon look really good. No other reports.
Listen.
I'm going to miss my time a lot. It's been six years of sitting up here and at times, um. Pretty frustrating and disappointing and, uh, you know, letting people down in the audience and, uh. But it's been a really good experience and I encourage people to stay involved, run for office, show up. Um, but yeah, I've enjoyed my time here so much. I don't have any reports. I don't think the PRSA has met in a, in a while, so. Uh, the Friends of Leavenworth Pool. Kurt is one of the leaders now in the back and I have a lot of confidence and he and the group of people that he's recruited or we've recruited together and. I look forward to seeing how that progresses. Uh, thanks, everybody.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Jason. Thanks, Jason.
Yeah.
Jason, Marco, T-Born, I'm going to really miss working with you guys.
Yeah.
There's going to be some very large shoes to fill. With our next council members. Um, I've really appreciated all the dynamic conversation and varying perspectives and I think that. The council is better for the people that serve, particularly those that have varying perspectives because we have incredibly diverse and dynamic conversations. And I think better outcomes come from those sorts of situations. So. Thank you very much for your service.
Yeah, sure.
I don't have any reports.
Well, I couldn't say any better than Anne just said it, so. Uh, but really. Um. I felt. Um, an added energy with you guys. And. It just was a great. Cross-section of opinion and background, uh, especially you, T-Born, coming back. Um. That was, I thought that was just a great addition. Uh, so. Thanks to each and every one of you guys for, yeah, so your time and, uh. Lost sleep at night, maybe, uh, it's all that kind of stuff, but anyway, thanks. So. Um. Some things I did was, I mean, it's, uh, I took an opportunity to meet with Fire Chief O'Brien on the MFTE just to kind of. Talk about those issues. I got some good information from him, which was really valuable and time well spent. Um. I attended the, um, plant, latest planning commission when they were discussing cottage, cottage housing and. One particular issue was the height of, uh, fight housing, which is different than an ADU, so I'm glad to see that. And, uh, this weekend, um. I attended, uh, had the opportunity to attend the essentials training by, um, all Washington cities. And really good, um. There was a excellent part on, on, uh. Robert's Rules of Order and, uh, I was kind of impressed with that. I was going to just. Lay a quote on you here. Uh, which really, I thought was really apropos. Let me see if I can dig it up here. Um. Said, uh. See. My timing isn't the greatest, but I'll, I'll dig it up. Um. So.
Pack it.
Yeah, pack it out.
I'll get back to you.
Lots of slides.
Hang on, yeah.
Commercial break.
She said, uh. A good thing she said was, as is tonight's discussion, serving on a local government board is like being in a marriage arranged by the citizens. Worth repeating.
Yes. No, no dating.
Maybe we should put that on the law.
Put that with the mission slogan. The result.
Right.
That's pretty good.
Yeah. You good?
Yeah, good.
Okay, I want to thank all of you guys for tolerating my passion for a community voice. Um, I know I haven't always been easy to deal with, but I've really felt honored and privileged to work alongside of you. There, there's a lot of. Excellent opinions and like Anne said, our diversity definitely makes us strong. And we have a diverse community, so if we're not diverse here, we're not actually representing. So. Let's stay diverse up here. Let's maintain a voice of the community and let's make sure that alignment stays true because. Our community has a lot of needs and, and they're not, they're, they're not always being met. And so when we see the Facebook gripes or. Hear people in the street or have people walk out because they want something different, we need to listen to that. And I think we've made great strides with these community, um, gatherings that we have. The community board. Yeah, those are great. And so I still love to see a survey go out monthly and a couple of other things because. We are people, right?
One more plug for the survey.
I couldn't let it, I couldn't let that pass. Got an happy monthly.
Another happy last survey.
Dying on that.
And the kids and survey the kids from the school, but thank you very much for allowing me to be that voice. And hearing my, uh, my opinions on that. So I really appreciate the time.
Exactly.
And next to you, T-Born.
Perfect, yeah. I don't have a report, um, but, uh, because I enjoy it. Um, so I baked a lot of cheesecakes. No, it's been a pleasure for me. I mean, I've, I've done almost fourteen years of. Two sittings here and. The cities change, but the one thing that. Doesn't change is the people that are passionate about it. And so. Uh, respect the seat. The seat isn't mine. The seat belongs to Carol and I hope I did her justice, uh. You know, being appointed, thank you guys very much. It was, it's been a pleasure. I would do it again. So if anybody wants to.
I'm just kidding. I can take some time off. No. You know.
Family-wise, I've had a rough. Seven or eight months and it, and it's, it's the nicest thing is that I got to come here twice a week, twice a month. And forget about everything else that life throws at you. And be able to do the work. Sit with everybody here and say, these are my colleagues, but they're also my friends and they're community members. And so. Uh. You know, for Rona, respect the seat. I know you'll do it justice, but, uh. You know, Leavenworth is, uh, it's a unique little place and it's not. To me, Leavenworth, and I've been here a long time, it's, it's, it's a tourist community. But it's not what we do, it's who we are. And it, the, the whole part is that. Living here and dealing with everything and that molds us to who we are and the passion that. It takes to run this place. So, thank you. You guys, I'll, I'll miss you guys, but. I'm going to show up for dinner every couple of days. Cause my salt and pepper shakers. But thank you.
Love your flavor.
I love my flavor. I love my peace. Yeah.
Thanks, T-Born.
Thanks, T-Born.
T-Born, thanks, Marco. Thanks, Jason. Again, um. It's great, um. You guys. Have another piece of cake before you leave?
Need a tub of Go-Box.
Um, yeah, appreciate that. And I know you won't be strangers because you're community members and active and going to stay. And contribute in. New and different ways. So appreciate that and, uh, look forward to seeing what new adventures you have. I, the only report I have, I was also at that train with Association Washington Cities, um. Again, representing the board as well, um, now that I'm on the association, um, board, but it was great. I'll have to say that. They had nine sites, plus they had some online folks and they had. Over five hundred. People attending from like two thirds of the cities had at least one. Member there. So it's by far was their biggest attendance at one of these new. Essentials workshops that they've done so around the state. So it was, it was great. It's good information. It's. Like they say, it's kind of drinking out of the fire hose to start with, um. But, um. Help, help set people on the right course and right track and figure out, you know, what this is all about. So. Um, it was great to be able to be a part of that. Um. And then, uh, attended today, um. Quarterly, the EUD and, uh. County Commissioners and the Port Commissioners all gather and have a joint meeting together and invite the mayors in and. And, um, talk about the commonalities and things that are going. And this one was focused on the legislature, on the legislation. The session's coming up and had all. The session's coming up and had all three of our, the two representatives, Steele and Gainer and Hawkins were all there. And, uh, so that was, um, also good and, and we'll be working closely with them on our agenda as well. So look forward to that. Um, that's all I've got. Selby?
I just wanted to say, Jason, Marco, T-Bore, thank you for your service. Uh, Marco, thanks for taking me paddle boarding on my first day in town, first day on the job.
Get your feet wet.
Yeah. Whoa. Nice. Yeah, let's go mountain biking, skiing, snowboarding, whatever.
Great.
Um, yeah, thank you for your service. Appreciate it. Um, Andrea and I have been working on a schedule for orienting our new council members. Uh, this will be my first time as a city administrator, bringing in new council, a new slate. Uh, so we'll be working on orienting them to the way we do business here in Leavenworth, which is a little nuanced compared to the AWC training that they received, which is all very important, but we'll be going through our council rules and our code of ethics and, and, and the way that we do things here. Um, so Andrea will be reaching out to the newly electeds and, uh, inviting them to meet with us, uh, hopefully by the end of this month. And then we'll arrange meetings with our department heads and tours of facility, uh, city facilities. And of course, these will be open to all of you as well to, to come along if you, if you so desire. Um, and I don't really have a report beyond that because everything I've been working on, we adopted tonight.
All right, let's see. Tom?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of updates. Uh, please first, please let me know if you have any questions pertaining to the November twenty-three Public Works Department reports found in chapter twenty-two. I wanted to acknowledge our Public Works team for supporting the first two weekends of Village Lights Christmas Town Festival. Not only did they have to manage the festival, they also had to battle a simultaneous snowstorm both first weekends. And a couple of the staff, they had to work almost twenty-four hours, just do shifts. So shout out to them. Um, and also too, at the last, last Saturday, I was at the, uh, the Event Coordination Center. I just wanted to acknowledge DOT, Sheriff's Office, and State Patrol. They had a hand, they had a nasty deal with, with traffic and the snow last Saturday. And they, and they coordinated well with one another. Had to witness the first ever State Patrol escorted snow file. So instead of precedent last Saturday. Um, as you have noticed, may have noticed, uh, Kara's press release, we were successful in acquiring one point nine million dollars in Transportation Improvement Board funding.
Yep.
Um, so the largest project is that citywide scrub seal and it'll address most of the city's roadway network. Our intention is to deliver the scrub seal and the crack seal maintenance projects next year and complete the ADA curb ramp upgrades in twenty-five. And I just want to acknowledge Annie Zontek's back term for her diligent, her diligence and successfully applying for these grant dollars. And last but not least, uh, thank you to the council members, Jason Lundgren, uh, Marco Rillow, and T-Bore Lack. I view, all three of you were very big supporters of Public Works. On behalf of Public Works, we thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Can I ask a question?
Oh, for sure.
On page three of three underwater division, third from the bottom, it said hydrants were low, chlorine residual was found, have been flushed.
Yeah, good, yeah, it's good, good question. So what happened was we had a chlorine injector that went haywire and on well three, don't worry, it was not an issue with zero chlorine. The chlorine residual was just low. And so in order, so we had this kind of slug of low chlorine that was working its way through the system. And the quickest way to, to get that out of the system is just to flush fire hydrants.
Yeah. Thousand gallons, man.
Thank you. Thanks.
You're welcome.
All right, Chantel.
I have to say, I'm missing out on the best meeting of the year. And I'm sorry that I'm not there with you guys tonight, but just so you know, I am at the hospital with my mom and she's doing well and recovering. So hopefully she'll be released in the next day or two. On that note, I would entertain any questions if you had any about the finance report. And, uh, time sheets are going well, the implementation. We've troubleshooted, uh, quite a few little items now that it's rolled out and staff are using the system. And last but not least, uh, Mayor, I'm not sure if you covered it in study session. Well, I couldn't hear everything going on, but were you able to get an appointee for the PRSA for January's meeting?
We didn't put it into the, the thing, but I do have, um, appointees that are willing to take it. Yeah.
Okay.
And they're, they will be there. Yeah.
Okay. That's it.
We'll actually appoint him in January, but they'll be at the meeting.
Okay.
Do you want to put that?
That is, Chantel?
Yes, yes, I'm done. Thank you.
Mel, uh?
Uh, thank you, Mayor, council members. I'm happy to report that we have had two, uh, senior planner uh, applications come in. We will finish the initial review on Monday. They are, we accepted applications through the fifteenth. So I have let people who have submitted already know that try and do some interviews on Thursday to get that position filled as quickly as possible. Uh, so we'll see how that moves forward, but we're excited about the applicants that have come in and look forward to more. Um, Jason, it has been a delight working with you. Thank you for all these years. Yeah, great conversations. I'm really glad that you kept pushing that fire. And I'm delighted to say we got something done, um, and a few steps in the right direction. And that really is a kudos to your effort and ongoing, um, push. So good job. Yeah, enjoy your family time. Super special and important. Marco, don't call me about the ice skating rink.
Can I call you to invite you for a skating session?
Yes, you can. No, I am just teasing. It has been fun to get to know you. You're super passionate. I give you that. Uh, and me on my toes. So that's great.
Get on your toes, too.
Uh, T-Bore, thank you so much for your thoughtful contributions to the discussions. The way you think through stuff is super valuable. You'll be very missed. I, I greatly appreciate that economic questions and spins on things. I don't typically think that way. But, um, I gain, I gain a lot from our conversations and I hope, I hope we hear from you more.
Sure. Absolutely. Thank you.
Yeah. All right. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Lo. Hey, I would even take a motion.
I will make a motion to return tonight's meeting. I'll second it.
All right. Seconded by Marco. Boy, they're anxious to go. All those in favor?
Let me see your hand. Which is?
Absolutely. Let's go.
I still, you were not realistic.
Kind of forgot.